It is 6:35 Tuesday, June 23rd. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Groton Resource Recovery Authority. Councillors present Granatoski, Franco, Zepari, Heath, Melendez, Baumgartner, and Bordelone. Councillors absent are Obree, who is having some technical difficulty, and Councillor Parker, who is attending a meeting on the council's behalf. So we do have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 9th.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 9th meeting minutes. So moved.
Moved by Baumgartner. Is there a second on approval of minutes?
Second, Heath.
Seconded by Heath. Any discussion on the minutes? We are on the Resource Recovery Minutes. Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor of approval 2024-36, June 9th, 2020 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven councillors. And we are on to new business, 2023-67, Amendment to Ordinance 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4 Resolution. This is on page three of the packet, and we are at, Councillor Parker's not here, Councillor Franco, please.
I'm sorry, I'm on page three. I have a minute.
Resource Recovery.
Oh, can you skip me?
Yes. Councillor Heath, are you set for that? Okay, I'll just take it since-
Madam Mayor, I can do it.
You got it, Councillor Baumgartner. Thank you.
Yes. So whereas the Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resources Recovery Authority, SCURA, and the Town of Groton Resource Recovery Authority, GRRA, authorize use of the Lisbon Wheelabrator Waste of Energy Facility in Amendment 5 of the Municipal Services Agreement between SCURA and the Town of Groton, and whereas the Town of Groton, through the Groton Resource Recovery Authority, needs to amend the ordinance number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4, to incorporate the addition of the Lisbon Wheelabrator authorized by Amendment Number 5 of the Municipal Services Agreement between SCURA and the Town of Groton, and whereas a public hearing was held on June 9th, 2020, for the purposes of amending ordinance number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4, to incorporate the addition of the Lisbon Wheelabrator, now therefore be it resolved, the GRRA authorizes amending ordinance number 239, Sections 13-1 and 13-4, to incorporate the addition of the Lisbon Wheelabrator authorized by Amendment Number 5 of the Municipal Services Agreement between SCURA and the Town of Groton. So moved.
Second, Heath.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heath. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will vote on 2023-67, Amendment to Ordinance Number 239. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously with seven councillors. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn the GRRA meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to adjourn by Zepari, seconded by Baumgartner?
Yes.
Seconded by Baumgartner. All those in favor of adjourning the GRRA meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned at 6:39. Thank you very much. And we're going to go straight into our committee of the whole meeting. Mr. Burt, is that acceptable to go on, or do we need time in between?
No, of course. I'm ready.
Okay, very good. Alright, so it is Tuesday, still Tuesday, June 23rd. It is 6:39, and I will call to order the Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. All councillors present, with the exception, let me just check, is Councillor Obree in the attendees? No, with the exception of Councillor Obree, who is having technical difficulties, and Councillor Parker, who is attending TVCCA. So we have seven councillors, and we have a quorum. Calendar and Communications. Councillor Baumgartner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This past week, I attended several Board and Commission meetings, including the Conservation Commission, the Trails Coordinating Task Force, as well as sat in on a meeting for the school, the Athletic Schools Task Force, I'm sorry, the Athletic Fields Task Force, and very substantive conversation in all of those boards, and actually, both the two task force, I'm a newly appointed member on, so I very much enjoyed learning about some of the issues, and thank Councillor Franco for her work on those commissions as well. So I know we've got some big shoes to fill. So with that, nothing further to say. Thank you.
We will go to Councillor Franco, as Councillor Parker is attending the other meeting.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Councillor Heath?
Yeah, I attended the Eastern Regional Tourism District Board of Directors meeting on Thursday, June 11th. They elected officers, including Chair Jim Bolano, and basically, they talked about several things. There were a lot of things on their agenda, but the thing that interested me the most was the discussion on the process of reopening, and how important it is for businesses, and even public buildings, to have hand sanitizer in the plastic walls and in place, so that people know that they're safe, that they feel confident, and that they know that they can come out and not catch coronavirus, or anything else. So that was really interesting, and also really good tier. I also attended, in the audience, two other events this past week. Our amazing Ocean Series webinar, "The Future of Our Oceans," and a conservation conversation hosted by COSA. And there were several state legislators there from across the region, and from both parties, and it was good to see everyone, and to see all their excitement and commitment. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Obree? Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Obree's not here. Wait, let me check, make sure. No? Okay. Councillor Bordelone?
Yeah, thank you. I attended the Fields Task Force, the last meeting that I attended. It was a lot of focus on the high school, and looking at what's needed up there. I also attended the Short Term Rentals Task Group, Working Group, and it seemed like a really energetic group, and they basically, it was just a lot of introductions, and kind of going forward with some kind of homework, and still brainstorming, and figuring out where things will go. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Melendez?
Nothing to report.
And Councillor Zepari?
No report.
Thank you. I just wanted to report out on the Short Term Rentals Working Group. We had our first meeting. It was delayed from March because of the situation with the pandemic. And we have, as Councillor Bordelone said, a very energetic group, lots of ideas, and we started off by the core group meeting, and presenting what they perceived as the issues concerning short-term rentals in the Town of Groton. And as you know, the members of the working group represent a vast array of people throughout the town, and everyone brought forth, I shared all the information that we had gathered, and we found some common threads. And I sent everyone on their way to review everything, and come back with what they thought would be best to address the issues that the people in the working group saw as problems. And we already have one draft ordinance. So one of the members created a draft ordinance. They sent it out to everybody, for everyone to read. The next meeting will be on July 1st, and at that meeting, we have invited in four members of the community who let their properties through short-term rentals, so we want to hear from them as well, and go over things with them, and get their opinion on things, because you can't make decisions unless you hear all sides of an argument. So that's where we are with the Short Term Rentals Working Group. Thank you very much. Let's see. Mr. Burt, did you want to say anything at this point, or should we just go on to approval of minutes?
Can go on to approval of minutes.
Thank you. So let's see. Where did we leave off? We had Councillor Baumgartner in the last one. Councillor Baumgartner, do you want to start again with approval of minutes? You usually take this-
Yeah, no problem. I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Special Meeting Minutes for June 2nd, 2020, as well as the June 9th meeting minutes.
Second, Bordelone.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelone. Is there discussion on the meeting minutes? And these begin on page two. The special meeting minutes begin on page two. The regular minutes are on page six. Get back here. And we have two pages worth of people tonight, so if you could use your, raise your hand, that would be most helpful, because I'm trying to keep track of the two sets. So I don't see any hands at this point. Councillor Franco?
I was looking for something. Hold on just one second, please. So I had noticed that in, I think it's page 1213, it's the land acquisition, and in there, I'd like it to be stated somewhere that the money that would go to purchase this land would come from the fund balance, because that was notated in discussion, and it's not notated in the minutes.
So Ms. Hilton can check the tape and make that adjustment if she finds that. And I'm still not seeing anybody else. Are there any other discussion on the minutes? Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay, I don't see any hands. So we will vote on acceptable or approval of the minutes for June 2nd, 2020, and June 9th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Was there an abstention? No? Okay. That moved unanimously, seven in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Excellent. We are on to new business, and this is 2021-59-3, 13 Fort Hill Road Land Transfer. This is on page 15 in your packet. And we do have a motion, and we are on. Councillor Franco?
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to transfer the 1,329 square feet parcel to 13 Fort Hill Road LLC at no cost. I so moved.
Is there a second?
And Bordelone.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Bordelone. And this is an item we've had discussion on before. The manager presented quite extensive background information in our packets. Do any councillors have questions at this point, or Mr. Burt, did you want to add anything at this point?
Nothing to add, however. Just let you know, Deb Jones and John Ryder are both on the meeting, if you have any questions.
Very good. Thank you, and thank you for attending. Councillor Zepari has his hand up. Councillor Zepari, the floor is yours.
I'm concerned about giving property away to people because their property is adjacent to it. The, we're told that this property is worth $900. It's .03 acres. That means that a full acre of land in that commercial zone would be worth only $30,000. Now admittedly, the little strip that they're talking about is not buildable, but it probably has, I suspect it has a value higher than the $900. Additionally, the, this fellow has sold property with a warranty deed, and was told that the property included that strip of land. Well, when you buy property with a warranty deed, there is a deed warranty insurance, and if the deed, the property you bought does not have, you're not entitled to the land that's included in the property that you bought. The insurance is required to pay for it. So with those things considered, I think that we should insist that we get at least the appraisal value. The appraisal was paid for by the person who wants the gift of the property. I suspect it's, the property is worth more than the $900, but nonetheless, it should not be a freebie. People in Groton work for their funds, and this is property that's owned by the people of Groton, and if it's going to be turned over to someone for their exclusive use, it should be paid for by the person getting benefit of that.
Mayor, this is John. Can I interrupt for one second?
Yes, Mr. Burt.
I should have pointed it out, too, that Brian Edmonds is also on, who is one of the purchasers of the property, and he could also answer your questions on what the plans are, if you have any interest.
Okay, Councillor Zepari, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, we have also with questions, we have Councillor Bordelone and Councillor Heath.
Yeah, my question is, is there any idea what the prospective owner will do with the property? That's my first question. And second, I feel like, you know, land is important, and it should be important on all sides of town. And with that only being a small piece of land, it does have a value to the community over there, and it could be used as a sitting park, or some type of recreational area that can be used for open space. It's along a walking path, and it's along the water there. It would be a great asset to keep for the town, and I think that it's important that we look at that on all sides of town, with those condos and that new construction across the way. I mean, has the town really thought about other ways that we could possibly use that space?
John and Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that property is accessible. It's on the, you'd have to go through the water to get to it. I don't believe it's accessible by land. And our assessor said if it was on its own, we would not tax it. It's got such a minimal value. And just to remind the council, we've done other things like utility help for businesses, so it might be something you want to consider, you know, as part of economic development. But John and Deb, can you answer if there's an excess outside of the water, besides going through this piece of property, through Mr. Edmonds' property?
This is Deb Jones. That's correct. The only other access to the property is from the Paquonic Bridge boardwalk, and you would have to go over the tidal wetlands in between this property and the boardwalk.
Right, but it could be used if the construct, it could be used if the construction was set up as such, and have the boardwalk walk, you know, kind of redirected, and it could be used as a sitting space. So I really am not in support of giving it away or selling it, honestly.
We have Councillor Heath, Baumgartner, and then Zepari again.
I actually walked the property. It took me like three seconds. It's really, it's at the back of the parking lot. It's up against reeds. There's no access to water, no view. It's a nothing piece of property. I guess the difference on whether or not I'd want to sell it for 900, or give it away for free, comes down to have they paid taxes on it, and do they understand that it wasn't theirs when they bought it. So I'm of either minds. I could support 900 or free. It's kind of a useless piece of property, in my opinion, but I don't want to do something that sets a bad precedent either, so.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to mention, my understanding is that he thought he was purchasing that piece of property with it, and it has been included with the taxes on that property. However, like I said, the assessor said there's really no value tax-wise to this lever.
We are on to Councillor Baumgartner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm reading that this project is a part of a new, you know, it's going to be the first development in this new mixed-use village district. And then, you know, as you go on, it says that the parcel that they're looking to acquire, 13 Fort Hill Road LLC, will be used for three parking stalls, as well as landscaping and stormwater quality treatment. So my question is, two parts. One, if you're going to be installing three parking stalls to that property, and obviously, you know, the Paquonic River is right next door, and, you know, adjacent to that property is all open space, what will the impacts be of that, of additional stormwater, given that, you know, the parking stalls will be in impervious surfaces? And then, secondly, well, actually, I'll just, maybe just start with that one.
Mr. Burt, who would be best to take that? Would that be Ms. Jones, or would you want to go to the owner?
Deb, do you have it? Ms. Jones, do you have a preference?
I can explain the stormwater system. There is a water quality unit that will be installed, that will treat the stormwater before it is discharged to an infiltration system, and if there is so much water that the infiltration system can't handle it, and there's an overflow, there's a very small overflow that will be directed toward the tidal wetland.
So will there be more or less stormwater runoff going into the Paquonic River, if they were to build these parking spaces?
The approved site plan actually has a small decrease in impervious surface.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
And just for the record, Councillor Obree arrived at 6:54. Thank you, Councillor Obree. Councillor Franco, and then we'll go back to Councillor Zepari.
So this property was sold in the deeds through two purchasers, as this is now the second purchaser of that property from the Paquonic Bridge Fire Department, volunteer fire department. And so I'd like to know legally, what has to happen with the paperwork, because I've been told numerous times that in Landlaw 101, it just goes back to the town, and they don't have any right to it to begin with. But if it was, was the deed done properly? And what are the repercussions on how the deed was done? And how does his insurance, his deed insurance, and all those other warranties that you have, when you have a closing of property, going to affect on this?
Mr. Burt, is Ms. Duggan here to speak to this, or do you have the answer to that?
She has not reviewed this. Part of it may have to be the owner. In terms of, you know, would revert back to, did revert back to the town, which happened a few years back, we would just have to deed it to the owner. We really have no liability on it. We weren't involved in the process. It would be between the seller, Paquonic Bridge, or whoever, the in-between owner, and Mr. Edmonds. But he can answer more fully if he has more information. But there is no liability to the town.
So you're saying that it is now, and years, a couple of years ago, it was deeded back to the town, is that what you're saying?
It would have automatically reverted. Nothing had to be done to revert it. Oh, you're muted. I think you're muted.
I'm not muted.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I did talk at the time, when this first came up.
So this property has a few cement pads, it has a building on it, like a shed of some sort. And so my question happens to be, it seems as though the council has been big proponents of open space. So right adjacent to this property is open space at the town, am I correct?
Yes, there's a river there. This is, like I said, pretty unusable, not usable for much, though.
Which, like swampland, open space is unusable as well, but we protect that as also. So in a sense, if we are going to be taking up Nine Gardens tonight as an open space, and if the council wants to support something of that nature, and in just the last council meeting, we were looking to acquire a parcel land, which we would be using up the rest of our open space money, as well as fund balance to use, I don't know why we would be giving away other property now, and not wanting to hold it as to open space, as it is adjacent to open space. So I would challenge the council to think of that with all the open space issues that have been coming up lately on our agendas, and how the votes have been going, and what that means to our town as well, and this part of our town. Because these other parcels may be in other locations, but this would expand on the open space in this portion of town. So although I do believe that this property owner is deserving of this land, who has gone through now, two properties have been purchased, and nobody has caught up on the deed that this was supposed to revert back to the town, and instead, it was in their purchase agreements. So I I would probably have to go with the owner of the property then, to acquire that parcel. Thank you.
We have Councillor Zepari, Bordelone, and Heath. Councillor Zepari?
Well, actually, I lowered my hand, because Councillor Baumgartner very astutely made the remarks that I was thinking of making. But just from what has come up recently, the land is not usable. In the packet we have, we're told that the purchaser was told that the property had reverted to the town, and was not, was not part of the deed. So I would be in favor of, I think that the best use would be the use that this owner plans for it, to use parking spaces, and I understand they plan to do some water treatment. But I, and I think it would be good for them to have the property, and it would probably be at least harmless to the town. But I think that they should at least pay the $900 that their appraisal says the property is worth.
Mr. Burt, is Brian, Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, yes, he is.
Mr. Edmonds, did you wish to speak to any questions or comments?
Sure, if, can you hear me?
Yes, could you just identify yourself, please, to the public?
Yes, hi. My name is Brian Edmonds.
You have the floor, sir.
Hi. Yeah, so I'm the owner of 13 Fort Hill Road, along with my partner, business partner Keith Bonowski. And we bought the property last July. We understood that the property did not have, that we had full title to the piece of property. We definitely did have insurance as well, but we, you know, we paid a substantial amount of money in cash for the property, and our plan is to renovate it. We are going to put a facility in there that will have a retail store. We'd like to put a roof deck in that would have a view of the Paquonic River. We would like to provide access to the Paquonic Walkway, because I think that would be the best way that our property could actually help that area, and that people walking along the Paquonic River boardwalk would have a separate access to be able to get in and out of the property. So we, our current plans are to spend a substantial amount of money beyond what we bought, paid for the building in cash. And we are developing what we know is in a very important section of Groton. I myself live in Groton. I live in Mystic. I moved up here a year ago, and started a company called New England Hemp Farm. And we're a CBD company. My partner's growing CBD up in Canterbury, Connecticut. And we have a store open in Westport, Connecticut, and Groton location would be what we're calling the barn. It's going to be the home of New England Hemp Farm. So if you've seen the building at all, many of you probably haven't, but the interior of the building is an old Grange building. It's got a beautiful stage at one end, a wooden floor, and then it's a firehouse that was really put on both ends of it. So it's a really cool property, and it's in the middle of an area that can have a profound impact on that part of Groton. We're very interested in being a very positive part of that development, and like I said, we hope that we can just have the property that we thought we rightfully owned brought to us, and given to us. I mean, if somebody really cares that we should go through the insurance company and have them pay $900 for the property ultimately, you know, that's fine as well. But we're operating in good faith. We bought the property in good faith, and we're planning on renovating into something that the town is going to be very proud of. If you could see the plans that we've done along the front of 13 Fort Hill Road, along Fort Hill Road, and our side buffer that's going to be there, it's going to be a profound change for the positive, I think, of that part of Groton. And we look forward to working closely with the town. So, you know, however you go tonight, it's obviously up to you. I'm very interested in preserving and creating access to the walkway, and I think this piece of property really does nothing for that. But if it does come into play at a later date, we would be very willing to make that part of it. So however you want to handle this to the town, that'd be great, but- So however you want to handle this to town, that'd be great, but I would hope that we want to see this piece of property developed into something that will really have a positive impact in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds. We have people who wish to speak a second time. I'm going to take my turn. I haven't spoken yet. So I would like to see us convey this property to, to the current owner of the larger property. I think we should look at it as an economic development benefit. We, anything we can do at this point, it's a small, relatively small price to help this business get on their feet. And I think we would all be very happy to see that property renovated and to become a very vibrant part of the Paquonic Bridge community. So I am in favor of the staff recommendation to transfer the parcel to 13 Fort Hill Road at no cost. We have counselors. I'm also pleased to hear that he's interested in access to the walkway. So thank you, Mr. Edmonds, for speaking on that. Council O'Bree, you haven't spoken yet. Did you wish to speak on this?
I think we should go forward with making arrangements for this gentleman to have that land. I think if it could be designated for a walkway parking, I think that would be great because right now there actually is no parking for the walkway. They use the areas around there, but it's really not designated for it. So if it could be designated as parking for the walkway, I'd be very much in favor of moving forward with transferring the land to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going back unless Council Melendez wanted to speak. Council Melendez, did you wish to speak? Okay, so we're going in second time. Council Bordelain, Heed, and then Franco.
I can respectfully understand the position of the prospective buyer and the errors that have occurred. I still think that, you know, any runoff is bad runoff and I think that it could be still developed with plants and be kind of a buffer zone and still be just of an asset to Groton and still be able to meet the walking path by, you know, opening that up and allowing it to be, maybe even have it accessible via kayak. I see a lot of potential that could be used there. So have we thought of looking at it from any other standpoint, like planting any plants there to prevent runoff and be a buffer to the water system?
Are you asking Mr. Edmonds to respond?
Not Mr. Edmonds because he wouldn't know that because he's, that's, I'm asking the town when they decided we don't need the property.
You're now deciding if you need the property or not. Staff doesn't believe we do, but it's your decision. No, we've now looked at adding more buffering there. I'm not seeing any plans that call for more buffering there. And obviously, we need to balance open space preservation and our waterways, but with also everything happening to support our businesses and expansion and redevelopment.
Right. Yeah, I just think it's important that we really look at it from that angle, too. Like, it could be still accessible by water and be used and open up the walkpath and also, you know, add in some gardens over there, plants.
I do, if I can, I do think one thing Deb Jones said before was the layout of the parking now has increased the green area of this property, mostly along the Fort Hill roadside, traveling down towards the river. So the actual profile of this parking area has less impervious space than the old one did. So there's definitely a benefit there to what exists currently.
Thank you, Mr. Edmonds.
Right. I still think we should hold the land and, and and put, you know, some type of plants on there to prevent runoff. Thank you.
Council Heed?
Yeah, I think just to sum it up real quick, we've, we've got three priorities that we're working off of here. We should be supporting our small businesses. This will help, you know, this new business develop in a way that's beneficial for them and for the town. We also have the priority of open space and, you know, being environmentally conscious. But this is, I don't believe this is the right piece of property. It's really tiny. It's a strip of property and another priority we need to keep in mind is fiscal responsibility. It's going to cost money to remove the buildings and remove the blacktop and to redevelop it. The easiest and cheapest way to go about this is to pass it along to the business, help the business and, you know, look for other areas around town that are more suitable for, for open space. And this, this just isn't, in my opinion, the place to argue about open space. Thank you.
We have Council Franco and Zepary.
So did I miss here that when you purchased the property, you thought you were actually purchasing this plot, that it was part of your deed?
Absolutely.
Did not own this.
Well, we thought that we owned that piece of property when we closed on the property.
Right. And then how much have you, have you had to get an attorney? Have you had to have an appraisal? What have you done?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we had the property appraised. We have an attorney who we work with. And once the property was appraised, we submitted it to the town. It really is 1,000 square feet or less. I think we had it as less, but roughly 1,000 square feet of, you know, land attached to us that had been attached to the property and then obviously automatically reverted back to the town. So, you know, we have, we have insurance. So if, if, again, if we just need to make it whole, I guess we can do that. But our insurance company then would what, you know, would, would make a payment. And if the town decided they wanted to keep it, I guess that that title company would have to fight the town. So none of that makes any sense to me. But, you know, however you guys want to handle it, we're, we're good with it. We want to make this a really nice property. We abut the, the walkway and we, you know, we do think it would take a concerted effort between us and the town to get access to the walkway because there's property between our property and the boardwalk. But we would work on that. So, you know, we're excited to be part of the redevelopment in Groton and, you know, we, we thought it was our property. So I've, I tried to talk to, to, you know, the people in the town, Deb Jones and others, and just said, we thought we owned it. We paid $380,000 for the property. And we just think it's a little bit of insult added to injury if we have to wind up paying more money for it. Even though, quite frankly, it won't even be my money. It will be the insurance company's money.
And to be clear, you didn't buy this from the town. You bought this from a private sale. Is that correct?
No, to be clear, we wish we bought it from the town because that purchase was $100,000 and my partner and I paid $380,000 for it.
Right. So this was a private sale between you and the previous owner?
Right.
Prior to that, they had purchased it from the Paquonic Bridge Volunteer Fire Department. That's correct?
As I understood it. Or I, I think they purchased from the town of Groton, but I don't, I don't know. I know I did purchase it last July and I'm not exactly sure how that person purchased the property.
So does any, Mr. Bird, would you have a possible answer to that? Because my question being is, if somebody purchases a property, how does the town take care of the deed and who's responsible when it transfers from one person to another that it's actually correct? And if there was supposed to be a portion of that property that went back to the town, I'd like to know how that was not found incorrect then.
For the first purchase would be my question. And then obviously ultimately second purchase, but you're right, both, both sides.
Right. And that's why I'm asking.
It was purchased from the town. It was purchased from the fire department. Oops, sorry. Let me turn my video on. It was not purchased from the town. It was purchased from the fire department. And it was brought to a former town manager's attention, I know, years ago, and I don't know what happened to it from there. It just came up recently with since my arrival.
So can I just question as to who in our town keeps track of who this property is that has to revert back to the town? Like, is there a list of property that if something happens, it reverts back to the town? Do we have a list of somewhere? I'm just curious.
Not that I know of, but we haven't had any, we've sold with reverter clauses since I've been here. So there hasn't one have been anything added. I've not heard of a list.
Well, the only reason I ask this is because it happened with this property and it's become a problem that's come to the council. And also, I mean, I've heard these other things about other properties that may, that are coming out to not be accurate. What, I'm just curious, like, what other properties does the town have that should revert back in case something happens? And then, you know, and obviously this one was missed. And if this happens in the future, with maybe a larger piece of property, this could create a huge problem for somebody or the town. Because it seems like if we decide not to give it to him, then he's going to go to the insurance company and the insurance company is going to come after the town then. So there could actually be some kind of litigation is from what I'm hearing.
Well, if they warranted it, I don't think it would be on us. But can I just mention to the council that we have a lot of really large items that are more important on the agenda for tonight that we have to get through? You know, I think the majority wants to sell. Can we focus on the price, maybe, of whether to charge?
I also have asked numerous questions about this and how this error happened and it didn't get corrected or sooner. And I really haven't gotten any answers on it.
I don't have any more answers.
I know, and nobody does. And that's why I'm wondering what, like, what can be done, you know, to correct?
Well, certainly any of the future properties that we have a reverter clause on will track. Now, this goes back, how long was this a fire department? I have no idea how old this was. As we know, in the past, there wasn't always, there wasn't scanning documents and keeping track the same way there is now. So, you know, obviously newer things are easier. But to know what is out there and, you know, throughout the town that is from 50 years ago, it's, you know, I'm not sure if there's not a list now, how best to approach that. You know, again, that's why you have a title search, though it should have caught it.
We have three other counselors who wish to speak. If you were all set, Council Franco?
All set, thank you.
So we have, let me just check the note. We have Council Zepary, Bordelain and O'Bree, keeping in mind what Mr. Bird said about the rest of the agenda for the evening.
Brian, I understand that you have insurance that would pay for the property. So this wouldn't create a hardship for you, is that right? If you had to pay for it?
Yeah, if I had to pay for it, yeah, it, it, it wouldn't cause a hardship for us. We'd, we'd lean on an insurance company who provided us with the, with the insurance on the, on the title.
And I would just like to say that the, if there were litigation that followed this from the insurance company, I don't think they'd come after the town. They'd go after the party that sold that property when they didn't have a right to sell it. And the information that we have in our packet was that person was advised at the time of purchase that there was a reversion on that piece of land to the town of Groton. So if I may, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a, an amended motion.
Let me get my paper. Go ahead.
I move that we transfer the property to, what is it, Evan, Brian Evan and his partner for the, for a price of $900 and that's it.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Moved by Zepary, seconded by Bordelain, and I'm just going to, I'm going to restate that just so we're clear, Council Zepary. Your motion is to recommend a resolution to transfer the 1,329 square foot parcel to 13 Fort Hill Road LLC at the cost of $900. Is that correct, Council Zepary?
Yes.
Okay, so we are on to this motion at the time. Council Zepary, did you wish to speak to that? You have the, you have the right to speak to that first if you wish to add anything. If not, we will go on to Council Bordelain and O'Bree, who also wish to speak.
From the discussion that we had, it seems that the, the best use of this property would be just, just as the people who are asking for this transfer plan. It would add parking for their business. I don't think it's as much value as open space. And so I think it would be good to, that they have it. On the other hand, I think it's a bad precedent to, to give property that the town owns away to anyone. If it has a market value and that has been determined by a, an appraisal to be $900, that's a small amount of money. It's a small amount of money to the insurer. It's a small amount of money to Brian. It's a small amount of money to the town. But it's a principle that's important that we not give the town's property away. Thank you.
We have Counselor O'Bree, Bordelain and Heed. That's what I have written.
Who do you want first?
Council O'Bree, did you wish to speak? I have you on my list.
Yeah, I don't want to take up any more time with this. I'd be happy, Rachel, I'm sure that Joe or some of the others will be happy to explain to you. Also, Council Mendez, there is a process that absolutely goes on. When they did the title search, they should have found it. They didn't. So that's why the insurance company is going to make the payment, not the owner. But there's definitely a process in place. So we really, this is just a very unusual circumstance. On with the voting. Thank you.
Are you making a motion, Council O'Bree? No. Council Bordelain, then Heed?
Thank you. Is there any way that, what if after so many years, this business decides, you know, that they don't want to be there in that property anymore and it's sold? Will there be any protection to that spot along the water, close to the water in the discharge or what would happen?
Mr. Bird or Ms. Jones perhaps can address that, but I believe it would go through the normal zoning process for whatever the new owner chose to do with the property would have to be reviewed and approved. Is that correct?
Correct. And you would have those spots established there. It's part of the assets of the property, you know, anyone buying it would be looking at that. And Deb, correct me if I'm wrong, but the current parking, the current stormwater runoff is not treated in any way. It's not controlled. Is that right? That this would be improved in that way?
That is correct. The parking lot as it is right now is paved. It does discharge in the same spot. There is no water quality treatment associated with it.
Right. So this is a big improvement for, for environmental quality.
Thank you. We're fine then.
So there's no, so it would just be up to whoever's there at the time and then they'd go through the zoning?
Correct.
Thank you.
Council Heed?
Yes, I just want a clarification right now. There are two motions on the floor. There's a transfer for zero and a transfer for the sale of $900.
That's correct. And the 900, we would vote on the amendment first. The $900 move, Council Zepary?
I'd rather vote the opposite way. So I'll make a motion to transfer this for zero.
That's the original motion, Council Heed?
Yes, I know. So that becomes the second amended motion?
You can't, you can't duplicate the same motion.
I want to vote on it the other way. I'll vote yes for both.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, everyone has had a chance to speak. Some people multiple times. So let's see, I'll go to Council Melendez one more time to see if he wishes to speak. Back again for another take. Council Melendez, did you wish to add anything? Nope. Council Baumgartner, you've been quiet on this except for one, one time now.
Basically, we've been on with it. I, you know, I think this council has already set a precedent for selling much larger property for a smaller amount. And so, you know, we, we are in the business of providing economic assistance to businesses. We've approved that for several small businesses. And so I think our economic development team has indicated it represents economic assistance to businesses that we're looking for. So I'd be supportive of the motion that Council Heed is making. But though, that's the original motion, but I, you know, I'd be supportive of either option.
Thank you. Council Franco, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Since I was, um, Counselor O'Bree had mentioned, I understand there is a process. And that's what I'm trying to find out what the process is. And I haven't been getting answers. And I think I would be asking the town for these answers. And that's why I'm asking them and not other people. So I could get accurate, full, truthful answers here instead of somebody else trying to just guide me. So, thank you. But I think this is the forum where I'm supposed to be asking the question. So with that said, I would be, I think the property owner has gone through enough hoops and done enough things and has paid taxes and done everything thinking he owns this property. And I'm willing to say, you know what, it belongs to him as well. And we could, and quit claiming it would not be a problem with me for zero. Thank you.
And I see no further hands. And I see no further hands. As such, we will vote on the first amended motion, which is to transfer the parcel to 13 Ford Hill Road LLC for $900, as moved by Zepary and seconded by Bordelon. I'm going to ask that you raise your hand and you keep your hand up until I call your name, please. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Zepary, Heed, Bordelon, Overy. All those opposed, please raise your hand and say nay. Nay, Granatoski, Franco, Melendez, Baumgartner. There are no abstentions because we are at eight councillors, that motion fails. We are back to the main motion, to recommend a resolution to transfer the 1,329 square foot parcel to 13 Ford Hill Road LLC at no cost. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, so moved unanimously with eight councillors, eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you, Mr. Edmonds, for coming out this evening, and we wish you the best of luck in your new endeavors. And we look forward to seeing that building as a thriving business. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. CBD, newenglandtempharm.com. Visit us online.
Good. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, councillor Parkler is here, yes. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to let you know I was here.
Thank you. Okay, so it is 7:26 and councillor Parker has arrived. We are on councillor Parker, item 5B, Overlook Avenue. And this is, let's see, this is councillor Heed. This is on page 47, please councillor Heed, if you could read that motion for us.
Okay, I am now unmuted. So a motion to recommend a resolution approving the addition of Overlook Avenue to the 2020 paving schedule is a move.
Second, Bordelon.
And seconded by Bordelon. Any discussion on this item? I see three hands. I see Franco, Parker and Heed. I don't know whose hand went up first because I was writing the motion down. So who would like to speak? Councillor Franco, why don't you go ahead and start, then we'll go to councillor Heed.
So, Overlook Avenue is the motion that I had brought forward to ask you for this road to be reviewed and paved. There are numerous roads around this neighborhood that are being paved at this moment. The equipment is up there. This neighborhood was approved by the previous, not our, not the council I was on, but the one prior to that, to be paved. For, and I do live in this neighborhood, so I would like to clarify that. No, there's no misunderstanding. And that this road seems to be overlooked. I had at one point contacted the town manager to please go out there and look at this road because I believed it was something that should have been included in the repaving. So he can give you his update on what he saw, but I drive this road probably at least twice every single day. And it is that the gas pipes were laid down in. And even if they come back and replace that portion of the road with a wide recover, the other part of the road is in such poor shape that I can't see why we would not want to fix this road. I believe on the last study, it was also rated as a very poor condition and actually, that was the most recent study, I'm sorry, that was graded very poor. And so I fully endorse that this road should be repaved, just from my experience of driving on it every single day. And I would like Mr. Burt to also give his opinion of what he had witnessed when he drove on it.
Yeah, it's definitely in bad shape. And then I think Gary Snyder, the former Public Works Director, was here at the time when it came up. And Greg Hanover is on the line, by the way, the new Public Works Director. And I believe they independently, even without input, already believed him was going to come forward, thinking it needed it. So I think there's multiple sources of people thinking this road's in need. Especially while we're working in the area.
We have councillor Heed and Zepary who'd also like to speak. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, when was it originally scheduled to happen and what changed in the interim?
That would be a Greg Hanover question.
Is Mr. Hanover unmuted?
Yes, good evening. It's Greg Hanover, Public Works Director. As councillor Franco said, this is the only road that was not scheduled to be paved in the neighborhood for some reason, you know, about two years ago. I'm not sure why it was not and when it was ever going to be paved. You know, when I got the most recent inspection report, when I drove it myself, I said, you know, I don't want to leave this one road in this neighborhood while all our equipment is there. And so I recommended in the paving report that we went through, you know, a few weeks ago, that we add this, you know, this road to the paving list and get it done while we're there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover. Councillor Zepary, I think, has his hand up. Councillor Zepary?
What will be the additional cost to adding this to the road resurfacing plan that we approved at a previous meeting?
This road itself is, would be about $78,000.
Another $78,000.
Correct.
In addition to it. Why didn't you put it on to the original list of roads that you wanted to repave this year?
Again, I didn't put the original list together, so I couldn't answer that question.
Remember, recall that Gary Snyder was the Public Works Director up until, I don't know, last fall.
Yes, I remember. Thank you.
Councillor Baumgartner?
I, councillor Zepary, I just want to note, I love your Zoom background.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
Yes. Particularly to Mr. Hanover, are there any other roads that, well, I, for one, support adding overlook to the list, but were there any other kind of last minute changes that you have thought of as a result of?
Not for paving for this year. I mean, I think we're going to be very busy and, you know, we're going to get all the roads in that area, as well as a few in Grattan Long points. There are no, you know, the other roads in that area, like Oceanview Avenue, were recently paved not too long ago. They're in good shape. So, you know, in this neighborhood, we're getting, you know, all the ones that really need it.
Thank you, Greg.
And I see councillor Franco has her hand again. Is anyone who hasn't spoken yet wish to speak first? Councillor Franco, you have the floor.
So this neighborhood that we're discussing was actually scheduled to be paved in 2018. And because of Eversource doing the piping, this was delayed. So that's why it's getting done this year instead of two years ago. So I don't even know why that road, and I honestly thought the road had been on the list. And when I found it wasn't, that's when I had made some requests and reached out. But a question I have is Eversource, because they're putting on the piping through the neighborhood and they were supposed to come back and do a wide repave on these roads to make them better. And the town is actually going to be doing the whole repaving of these roads as it was previously scheduled. Will we be reimbursed by Eversource for any of that funding, for what they would have originally paved?
Mr. Burt, is that a you or Mr. Hanover question? I'm not sure.
That would be a Mr. Hanover question.
Yeah, there's, there was no discussion of getting reimbursed for that work because we had these roads scheduled to be paved anyway. They knew that. So we kind of coordinated all our schedules so that we would be doing these roads after they put the gas lines in. I mean, there are some other roads like Judson Avenue, for instance. They're going to be coming back this summer doing a full, you know, permanent trench patching. So there are a number of roads that they still have to get to. But the roads that we were going to repave anyway, there was no, you know, we basically gave them a buy on the trench patching.
Thank you, Mr. Hanover.
So on Overlook Avenue, if they're, if they're thinking right now that they're coming back to do a trench repaving and you contact them and say, hey, we'll do this road, the whole road ourselves, and you could just give us whatever funding that would have cost you for trench repaving, would they reimburse us for that?
We could always ask that question.
And I know you weren't around when all the pipeline negotiations were probably happening. But I would just think that in the future, if, my personal opinion is, if we're going to take on something of the paving and they would have been doing it themselves and we say, hey, we're going to do it ourselves, we're going to do it instead of you. Maybe we could just take the kickback from Eversource so that they won't have to do the work themselves and probably save them money and help save us a little bit on doing the paving as well. Thank you.
All right. No further hands, so we will vote on 2430, Overlook Avenue, addition to 2020 paving schedule. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved unanimously with nine councillors. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hanover. Okay, we are on to item 5C. This is 2024-35 Police Department Update. And we have several people here with us this evening. And I'd like to welcome Chief Fisaro, Attorney Daigle, I believe Mr. Gately, Ms. Duggan and Mr. Zagami are all with us as well. I'm going to yield the floor first to Mr. Burt to introduce us to everybody and kind of lay out the format for the presentation. And then he can in turn introduce the chief and whoever else is going to speak to us tonight. So I ask everyone to be patient because I'm sure everyone has lots of questions. So please try to be respectful of your other councillors who may also have questions that they would like to ask. Mr. Burt, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. The town council and the moderator had asked for an update from Chief Fisaro concerning policing practices. His report will cover a variety of topics related to the Grattan Town Police operations. He'll review, he'll discuss use of force policies, number one calls, diversity of force, oversight, complaints and transparency. Use of force policies and rules, excuse me, I just dropped down a thing. Chief Fisaro then introduced attorney Eric Daigle of the Daigle Law Group. He had, attorney Daigle's firm specializes in the development of updates, updating police department policies. And his firm has been working closely with the police department to ensure our policies reflect best practices and law. I want to say first off, I fully support our police department and believe it's among the best in Connecticut. Grattan Town Police have a strong departmental, departmental leadership, coupled with officers trying to keep our community safe. Our rank and file officers are the roots of a community policing program and their day-to-day activities reflect our emphasis on a guardian police culture. I call for all our dialogue involving our officers to be constructive and to entreat, and to treat our officers like the professionals they are. And please keep in mind, many of our officers are watching this meeting as we speak. Having said that, there is always the ability to do things better and to further improve relations between our police and the residents they serve. The core societal issues of poverty, mental health, addiction, education and overall health must also be addressed in fostering an inclusive environment. The Grattan Town Police approach law, and you'll hear more about this, the Grattan Town Police approaches law enforcement as a guardian peacekeeper function and provides regular training towards that goal, actually weekly training. The police department has also spent the last few years working with Mr. Attorney Daigle to review and update all policies. They're continuing to work on updating approximately 126 policies, but they have completed and have in place most major policies, including all that fall under CLASP, which is the compliance to law enforcement standards and, standards and practices, which have been provided to the town council and RTM moderator in advance. Many of these policies are rooted in federal and state laws and court cases and to ensure compliance with contemporary standards and best practices. This continues with the end result of achieving, of goal of achieving international accreditation under COLIA in the future. While I applaud efforts towards our, towards community policing, I think many communities rely on that as a silver bullet to better relations with its citizens. It's certainly one piece. We need to create a true partnership with community members to better our department, which in turns betters the whole community. A process that involves our citizens is needed to help empower our residents and to create a better bond between police and the community and the community, including finding better ways of accomplishing policing as well as supporting appropriate resources needed to accomplish those goals. Review and recommendations can be made without running afoul of the town charter and collective bargaining agreements. For example, our officers are regularly placed in stressful situations, including those involving mental health and chemical dependency issues, which they are not fully prepared to handle. And we need to consider different models or collaborative efforts for addressing these situations. Ideally, there would be a body consisting of citizen staff and elected officials that can focus efforts on these type of issues, accomplishing the goal of giving true citizen participation while also helping to give our police the tools needed to best serve and protect our community. Just a little background on our town's diversity efforts, which I think do come into play here a little bit. One of the first things I discussed with Bob Zagami, the HR Director, Assistant Town Manager, when I was hired, was the need for a more diverse employee base to better match the diversity of our community. It's important, I think it was week one, it's important to remember that diversity includes many things and we have been successful to some extent. Mr. Zagami and I met and discussed ideas with many different agencies and experts in the field, trying to find better ways to connect with a broader range, range of job applicants. To those, due to those discussions, the town started sending job advertisements to the NAACP of New London, various area churches in Grattan and New London and posting on targeted websites. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, the town's diversity committee, was initially formed using town staff to help with the expansion of the diversity among employee base. In the last six months, the committee has expanded and now has over 30 members, consisting of a majority being non-town related, along with town staff and now elected officials. This committee consists of very dedicated people deeply committed to improving our committee, our community. After researching best practices for police departments and talking with a wide variety of people, I'm making the following recommendations. One, continue to ensure our officers are utilizing the guardian approach. This will be done through training and leadership example, as well as holding officers accountable. Two, require all town employees to participate in upcoming community diversity trainings. Bearing, bearing in mind, this will be an ongoing process over time and not a one-time training. Long-term change requires a long-term commitment. The town council and RTM supported funding this training and I call on them to continue providing necessary financial resources in the future to continue these efforts. Utilizing the existing DEI committee to provide citizen participation along with our elected officials and staff. I recommend the following underneath the DEI committee. One, have police and attorneys review policies with the committee to offer legal insight and to offer, and to allow them, the committee, to give input and feedback. Reviewing and making recommendations on efforts to increase diversity among the police department and the entire town government. Review and make a recommendation on whether additional community policing officers are needed. Review and make a recommendation on whether community service officers should be added for basic tasks to free up officer, other officers. These positions do not carry firearms and do things like process prisoners, community outreach, that type of thing. Review and comment on any investigation results on any use of force incidents, instances and citizen complaints. Review and make a recommendation on potential utilization of trained mental health workers, working collaboratively with the police department. Review and make a recommendation on potential utilization, or sorry, did that, review and make a recommendation on ways to better work with members of our community experiencing a chemical dependency issue, whether through hiring of chemical dependency councillors or other avenues. Review the need for the town to provide more resources to officers for training or for mental health resources for our officers. Research and make recommendations on how best to diversify town agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, committees and councils, our ABCs. Now talking about the town council, I want to talk about all the subcommittees that are formed by the town council. Also calling to release, we, the town police do release, I think all police departments release a yearly report to the state on the use of force during the year. I call on that to be released to the public besides going through to this committee to be, to be utilized, along with the creation of a yearly report showing the number of citizen complaints. Petition this, right now, there is no central repository for complaints or for these different reports. So I, I call on petitioning the state and fellow government to enact tracking systems for complaints and creating a central repository. And then also looking at posting all adopted police department policies that do not jeopardize officer safety or investigative techniques on the town's website. With that, I will be sending this written, these written comments to the council tomorrow so you can peruse them at your leisure and ask follow-up comments if you don't, if you think of some after tonight. And with that, turning over to Chief Fisaro.
Thank you.
Who, by the way, is about the best chief any town could have.
Thanks for that. Are you able to see me? Am I, let me?
Picture. Let me promote you to, to panelists, that might do it. Try now.
On the top right of your screen, Mr. Chief Fisaro, there's a, there are three little dots. Click on that and it'll open it up. Oh.
Now you're muted, chief. Just need to unmute.
All right, I'm way too well-versed in the Zoom. I spend hours a day doing this. So first, I want to thank you. I am actually, believe it or not, excited to be here. I'm fortunate to be in the position I'm in. I'm fortunate to work with the people I work with. And that goes from everybody that, from our newest hire- with. And that goes from everybody that, from our newest hired officer and dispatchers up through and including members of this body, and privileged to have the leadership of John Burt as our Town Manager. So I appreciate that. We've got some folks here with me. We've got Deputy Chief Gaetley. And to start this off, I think it's important that you know the quality of, of people and the caliber of folks that you have in this department. That's of critical importance for you to know. I think when I was appointed chief, I don't believe anybody was a sitting council member at that time. But I think it's important for you to understand where our officers come from. They represent this community. Clearly, there are goals, not just in this agency, but many others to diversify our ranks. I support that and I endorse that. Right now, I will tell you, recruiting in law enforcement is, is probably the worst it's been, certainly in my adult life. I was born into policing because my father was a police officer long before I was born. I've never seen the challenges of recruiting people into this profession that I'm seeing today. Having said that, we're fortunate in this agency to have a whole host of folks that come from varied backgrounds. We have a high percentage of female officers, very talented officers across the board. They represent fathers, mothers, sisters, brothers, of all religious backgrounds, people of different ethnic makeups, minority groups, as well as people that are gay, straight. We have the mix, and that's representative of this community, and I'm proud of that fact. We also have officers that have degrees of, from associate's degrees and high school diplomas, but the majority of our folks, 36 to be exact, have bachelor's degree, seven, I'm sorry, eight with master's degrees and other seven officers pursuing master's degrees. Our dispatch staff has similar numbers, up to and including master's degrees, and we happen to have one with a law degree. So we've got a very well-educated department staff. I think it's important for you to know that, but I think it's also important to know where the leadership team comes from. Many of you probably know this, but I spent a career with Connecticut State Police for over 21 years. My last positions were the Director of Terrorism. I directed the Fusion Center, and I was also the commanding officer of the Emergency Services Unit before I retired, as well as having had barracks commands in Montville and Colchester, commanded the Eastern District Major Crime Squad, and was a Deputy District Commander, well, post-certified instructor. I've had regional and national leadership positions with the National Fusion Center, currently a sitting member of FBI's Joint Terrorism Task Force Executive Board. In fact, I went down to Washington DC in the fall to participate in the national meeting, President of the Police Association of Connecticut, Executive Board Member of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, and I'm a member of the CTRP3, or the Connecticut Racial Profiling Prohibition Project. I'm on the Executive Board of that, where I go to meetings every other month. My educational credentials are bachelor's from the Citadel, master's degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Western New England College, University now. I've graduated from the Secret Service Dignitary Protection Seminar, the FBI National Academy, US Army Command and General Staff College, and the Naval Postgraduate Schools Executive Leaders Program. And just because I don't have enough to do, I'm an adjunct faculty member at Mitchell College, and I am a Colonel in the reserves in the Connecticut National Guard. My partner, Deputy Chief Gaetley, he's got a similar resume. He spent almost 22 years in the state police. He was a major crime squad detective, supervisor of major crime squad, worked as a diver, which he's very proud of as a Navy diver for many years. He's a former Marine, federal agent, and that's probably a well-kept secret, but Deputy Chief Gaetley is a special agent with the Coast Guard Investigative Service. He's actually still a member of that as a reservist. And before, we were privileged to get him on our leadership team. He was the Director of Security at the US Naval War College in Newport. So I think that you need to know that, because I think that we've taken those, those experiences and brought them here to this department, and, and this department was good to start with, and our job has been to make it better. And with your help and collaboration, we plan on doing that into the future. But we also make sure that our officers beyond the entry level are trained at a, at a high level. We've instituted a professional development program where people, when they get promoted, when they go become sergeants, we send them to Roger Williams University for a couple of weeks, where they get their first line supervisor training. And then when they move up the ranks to lieutenant, and soon, we hope to have another captain, as Captain Sinagra retired a couple of months ago. But we send them to additional in-service training, usually in residence through the Command, and the Command College, which used to be at a Babson College and is now at Roger Williams University in Rhode Island. So it's important for me to make sure our officers have the best training and the best skill sets in order to do their job the best way for this, for this town, and to, to make sure they are emblematic of the professionals that we expect. Having said that, and I know that, I don't want to, I don't want to make him wait any longer. We have been through a process over the last couple of years. When I became chief, we had, we had a policy manual, which is this one here, that, that the bulk of it, in fact, all of it was written in the 1990s. So we've undertaken a major project over the last couple of years under the leadership of Deputy Chief Gaetley and members of our staff to update those policies. Contemporary policing policies are important. We need to make sure that we protect our officers, protect the community they serve, but also protect the town, so that we're doing constitutional policing, that the legal authority that we have to do our job is understood by our officers, that the authority that they exercise, that is provided through, through state and federal constitutions and ordinances of this town, are understood and they're handled in a professional way. So that has been an arduous task. Despite what you may see in the public, policing has done a lot in the last several years to make sure that we comply with constitutional policing practices. And I'm happy to have on, on this meeting someone that we know to be a leader in this field. He can, he can go over his credentials, but I've been privileged to know Eric Daigle for a few years now. We share somewhat of the same lineage as does Deputy Chief Gaetley from where we started our law enforcement careers. But I will tell you this, obviously, he's on the phone, so he's going to hear me, you know, wax poetic about him. But he's a guy that when you go to training across the country, Eric Daigle's a headliner at. He's the guy that provides insight and, and advice on policy, contemporary legal issues, and really best practices for law enforcement, not just here in Connecticut. We're lucky to have him here in Connecticut, but he's, he does this for the International Association of Chiefs of Police, for many organizations, the, the Tactical, NTOA, National Tactical Officers Association, among many others. So again, without further ado, Eric, I'd like to ask you to maybe make some comments. You're the guy that we've been looking to for our, for some of our, for all of our policies. You have a program that's second to none, and I think that our, our Town Council and RTM members should hear about that, and they should hear it straight from the horse's mouth. So Eric, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, chief. And thank you for the opportunity. Can you, everybody hear me?
Yes, you're fine. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name's Eric Daigle. I am the principal of a law firm called the Daigle Law Group. We are a, a national policing consulting and management firm. My history, in most of us that sit there, we have long resumes, just because I think we've just been around for a while. Started my career very simply with Connecticut State Police, overachieved myself out of a good job after graduating law school. Have been practicing law for approximately 19 years. Started my legal career as municipal defense counsel for, for municipalities in the state of Connecticut. Opened my law firm for law enforcement specialties, specifically after Ferguson, and 2010, 2014 was Ferguson. We focused nationally on ensuring best practices for police agencies. We've been engaged with your department, the chief and the deputy chief, and members of your department with our, we have a, part of our firm is called the Policy Center. We develop police policy manuals for agencies all over the country. We are housed here in Connecticut, so obviously we have a special relationship to those departments, the 36 departments in this state that are our clients, just as you are. We are focused on making sure that your officers and your command staff have the best and the brightest operational standards to interpret and utilize on their daily operation. As we go through here today, I know there's a lot of questions out there as to policies. I am proud to say that a couple of weeks ago, when use of force policies became, first became part of a scrutiny, or again, our policies have made the test of time over the past couple of weeks. The things that you are seeing across the country that were issues in policies were not issues in your policy, we have, we have addressed those issues as a basic constitutional platform. And what I think it's important to know is that your department relies on a lot of expertise to get to a point where they can make a decision to ensure that they are providing the best guidance to their officers, which in change provides the best interaction with protecting the constitutional rights of your citizens. So chief, thank you for the opportunity. If there's specific questions or issues that you'd like me to address, please just let me know.
Sure. Thanks, Eric. Earlier this weekend, we provided, or I provided John Burt with what's, what are called class policies. I will tell you, Connecticut's well-positioned compared to other states in the country when it comes to policies as a whole. There are several policies of which you got them, which are, are state mandated. And what I mean by that is the overarching governing board for law enforcement for police officers here in Connecticut is the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. It's a state agency within the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. And basically, what they do is they, they, for lack of a better term, regulate and license police officers. In order to be a police officer in Connecticut, there's only two agencies that you can go through to be a police officer. One is the state police, it's a self-certifying agency, and the other is post. And what happens is, post prescribes the, the way an officer is selected, up through their training, and what they have to do for in-service training. So every three years, we have to be recertified as police officers, which there are prescribed, several prescribed classes that we have to attend. And not only those classes, but depending on your rank, there's usually additional classes you have to take. Clearly, at our level, you get a lot of labor and employment, stuff like that, matters that you have to do, that you're involved with managing at a police department. We have, you know, we, we came into this agency, they were certainly in a, in a pretty good shape overall, but there were things that needed to be immediately addressed, and those were addressed. And as I said before, the policies were the, were the key among those. So having partnering with Eric, but also getting those policies that the state promulgates is helpful to us. One of the ones you may be most familiar with is our body worn camera policy. That has a lot of stuff in it. That was a state policy that the preceding council was aware of, because when we took the grant from the state of Connecticut to get body worn cameras, we had to adopt that policy. And there's certain provisions in that, that we adhere to. Our officers, from myself, down to our newest patrol officer, as well as our animal patrol officers, all have body worn cameras. We comply with that policy. We, but now, at the time, it was a matter of taking the grant. Now, police departments that, across the board, have to adhere to that policy because it's, it's codified in post-regulation. Last year, the state legislature enacted several other changes that resulted in policy development and policy changes for departments across the board. One of them was a statewide pursuit policy, refreshing that. There are use of force and reporting requirements, which I can get into in a little while, because I'm sure you have interest in that. And, and the reporting requirements has evolved recently as to what municipal departments are to provide to the state of Connecticut as far as use of force issues, things of that nature. I think what we're going to see in the near future is a refinement of that as well. As you guys know, the state legislature is going into special session, and they're going to, they're going to weigh in on some of these issues. I suspect that we're going to see some things change. I think that they're going to enact other things that may, in fact, help us with, with certain things that we've been trying to implement from, from time to time in law enforcement. Some of the other things, to just give you a background on, on changes that have happened in the recent past, we've established a biannual evaluation of personnel. That was done through the collective bargaining process, where our officers are now evaluated twice a year by their supervisors, incorporated into that a performance standards and things that we're, we're expecting out of them. So that's a, that's a change from what had happened prior to, prior to, to this leadership team. There is a complaint tracking system. I can't attest to what happened prior to me getting here, and that's not to, that's not to claim that there wasn't anything, but since 2015, we track every, each and every complaint that comes to this department. It doesn't matter how it comes, whether it comes by phone call, by a person arriving at the police department, by a request to talk to a supervisor, by an email. Every single one of them is tracked. It's given a, a control number in accordance with what has become the state policy on complaints. Our complaint policy is posted in multiple places, Town Hall. It's available through the Town Manager's Office. It's on our website. If someone comes here, they can ask to fill out a form. They don't have to fill out a form. They can call. We've accepted them in every manner I've mentioned above, and then some. So it is readily available. It's out there online. It complies with the post standard. It's, it's in line with what Eric has produced for us as a policy, which is again, in line with the post policy. It's a very comprehensive one, and I think you, you should have gotten a copy of that, and you could certainly, you know, ask any questions on that in a minute or two. We've established a social media presence. We've replaced an antiquated and somewhat unsafe radio system through the help of this council. We've made infrastructure improvements, and we fell in on a couple of reports, or I fell in on a couple of reports when I got here. One was, at the time, a very controversial, and still remains a controversial report, reflecting not necessarily the best things in, in policing, but it's something that I've been proud to participate in, and that's the racial profiling report. And when the original study was done, this department was identified as, as having statistically significant incidents where, where minority population may have been stopped. I will tell you, and I, you can validate this on your own. You can contact Ken Barone at CTRP3, which is a Institute for Municipal Policy and Research. Had the, the studies been done the way they are done today, it's unlikely that this department would have been on that report. Those are his words and not mine. Since that time, I've been a member of that panel. Myself and Eileen Doug and the Town Attorney really dug in deep on that, had to understand it. There were some, some things that were happening that were problems within the department. And what I mean by that is some of the tracking mechanisms we use. We use paper systems. It was, the accounting for some of the stops wasn't reflected in the report that was written. I can, I can certainly provide a deeper dive on that at some other time, but that, that's in the past. That was not as, that happened in 2013, 2014, that study, and it was released in early 2015, when my first exposure to it was still as a member of the state police, when I went up for the briefing on it. We haven't been on it since. We have, we've done a lot of work. Our officers take pride in the work they do, and they're very good at it. The other report that we fell on was a perf study, talked about policing here in Grotton, and this is a unique community. We have three different police departments, and you're only hearing from one chief tonight. I suspect that you'll want to have similar questions for, for other, for my partner agencies. Tonight, it's, it's my turn, and I hope that, I hope that I'm able to answer some of your questions. But it is indeed a unique perspective, and one of my first directions was to get to know that report, and that was from the previous Town Manager, Mark Offinger, who wanted me to learn a little bit more about the uniqueness of this community and the, and the way we, we run things in this town. And I've tried to embrace that and make sure that I understand the stuff that was put in that report. Shortly after that, myself and several others went to Gloucester, Mass. with what became a Community Speaks Out to look at the opioid problem. And our, our team here of officers and personnel embraced that effort, and we continue today. Although we don't track it, we don't expose it as much as we did, but our officers are still carrying Narcan. They're still giving that to people out in, in society. What I think that speaks to are some of the issues that are coming up in policing today. We are asking police officers in 2020 to do things that you could have never imagined when I started my career in the early 90s. Certainly not things that my father would have expected to be doing when he was a police officer in the 60s. We ask officers to handle mental health issues. When I think myself and the deputy and probably Eric Daigle were, were newly on the job, there were still institutions here in Connecticut where we would take people. Right, right up the river, we had the Norwich State Hospital. I'm not suggesting that that was the right way to handle things, but there were mechanisms in place that don't exist anymore. We ask our cops to go out there to be counselors. We ask them to be lawyers. We ask them to be medical professionals with, with Narcan. We ask them to go to an incident scene and resolve pit issues that have taken place over years, that have matured for many, many decades and require years of therapy to address. If you're, if you're of the mindset that officers should be able to do that, I would argue with you that officers do a pretty good job with it, but they're certainly not mental health professionals. So is there a need for that in our society? Absolutely. Because officers have a limited ability to handle those type of situations. Officers have the ability to arrest someone. Officers can take someone as an emergency committal to an emergency room. And beyond that, it's more of their powers of persuasion and their community caretaker functions that they, they bring to bear. Our officers do a pretty good job with all that stuff. In fact, they do an exceptional job on that, what they've, they're asked to do so much. And I've heard a lot about complaint, the complaint policies and how things are addressed nationwide and statewide and oversight. Those are all things that we're willing to talk about and listen to. But I think it also has to be an exchange of ideas and, and understanding of the stressors that our officers are under. I've also heard a lot, and I've seen it in state legislative publications recently, or, or draft ideas about President Obama's 21st century policing. And Eric, I know I went to a couple of classes that you did on that very topic. The one thing I'm distressed about is I have not heard a lot about the sixth pillar. And the sixth pillar is officer wellness. We've embraced that in this department. We ask our officers to do an awful lot. They respond to crime scenes and horrific incidents. Without being too gory, I can tell you about stuff that our detectives have done recently investigating crimes against children. Now, their mothers, they are mothers and fathers, and when they walk out of an interview room with a suspect who's told them with a straight face about the most heinous acts they've ever heard in their life, that's troubling. That affects them. And these are officers, when they get done doing that, go home to a family. And they're ones that have to respond to other calls for service. To, to pretend that officers don't have feelings and don't suffer because of those consequences, and don't remember when they're at the consequences and don't remember when they're at the, the scene of a traffic accident and a poor little girl is dead and four years old and go hug and cry over their own kids at night, you're kidding yourself. There's a lot of stress these officers are under regularly. And those are just a tip of the iceberg of recent events that officers in this town have, have seen. So, so occasionally we do get complaints on officers. I'm proud to tell you, it isn't very often. And sometimes those resolutions aren't to the satisfaction of people that make the complaints. And that's unfortunate. I'm sorry about that. You know, sometimes our officers make mistakes. We do deal with it. We've, we've issued discipline in this department and I've seen proof of it up to and including termination at times. So, you know, it does happen. So I, I, I want to set the stage to make sure that people understand this is all stuff that's taken very seriously, not just by leadership team here now, but the leadership teams in the past and the town fathers as a whole. So to kind of give you an illustration of that, and I'm going to see if I can share my screen.
While you're doing that, Chief, I'll just add that Groton Long Point in the city provided replies to some of the questions via email to the whole town council. So we have those on record.
And I appreciate that, Mayor. I have the same questions here. I've gone into, I think, I think some detail on it. I'd be happy to go over those too, because I know that, that there are some answers that people would like to hear. And so they can, they can compare them to what our partner agencies provided. What I've, what I've got in front of you, and I hope you can see it, is a little chart I put together showing what we've got for recorded data since 2016. Again, you know, I came on board in 2015 and the, and the last six months of the year. I don't have all of that data because some of it wasn't tracked the same way. But our officers have responded to roughly about 24, 25,000 calls for service per year. If you look at the number in the second column from 2016 to 2020, it's relatively consistent, right around 800 arrests per year. Okay? In the third column of the use of force incidents. Now, under the current policy, and maybe Eric, this is something you can, you can highlight a little bit. We do track it. Eric's, Eric's been instrumental in providing us a tracking mechanism and a form that we use that complies with state mandates for use of force incidents. We track them in three manners. There's level one, level two, and level three. And just to give you a brief example of them, and there's much more detail in our policy, a level one would be if an officer draws their taser and they activate the laser on it. There's no, they haven't used the laser. Maybe they've, when they took it out, they gained compliance because officers, the goal of an officer in using forces to gain compliance. And that starts with an officer's presence, an officer's verbal ability to convince someone to voluntarily comply. And then it escalates from there. And maybe, maybe Eric can hit on that because there's been a lot of misconceptions out there about a force matrix, force continuum, all these, these things that maybe are a source of confusion to people that aren't familiar with law enforcement and law enforcement training. But those are our use of force incidents, very low. In my analysis, this department hasn't used deadly force and I'm looking for wood to knock on because we never want that to happen in our profession. Hasn't used deadly force certainly in, in, from my, from my analysis in the last 25 years. We have used tasers, most recently a taser use was done, our officers did a couple of weeks ago at the scene of an incident where an individual had already physically started sawing on his own neck. They responded to a scene and one of the officers was able to take him into custody. Did an outstanding job. The, the team of officers that were there saved that individual's life. So officers do in fact use force and do need to use force and have to do it under very scripted circumstances. In the next column, you'll see the number of civilian complaints, and those are complaints that came to this department from outside sources. As I told you since 2015, every one of them has been recorded and adjudicated in some form or fashion, whether it's through an internal affairs investigation, a supervisory review. Those are, those are investigated. If a supervisor is assigned this, they're expected to do a report. They provide that to the deputy chief. Or the deputy chief may assign it for other action where an internal affairs investigation, which is a little bit more complex, is done. Or he may take some initial inquiry and find that it requires additional review. We've gotten, as you can see, the numbers in front of you for civilian complaints, but also we have other complaints that are initiated in other manners. And that's usually through internal audits and corrections. If we find something or something that I learned or one of the supervisors learned, it's brought to our attention, we may initiate a complaint or a, an internal affairs investigation for a violation of policy or some other incident where someone doesn't meet expectations or there's some concern that we have that we need to investigate. So to me, that speaks to accountability and transparency because not only are we taking the civilian complaints seriously, but we're taking those of violations of policy and other things that we find on our own through our audits and through our supervisory staff. We take that serious as well. I, I've kind of, I've kind of cut you out there, Eric. I don't know if you have any comments there, particularly on the use of force stuff, because I know you and I, we've had discussions about that. Our policies comply with, with everything. I know there's, there's concerns about, you know, chokeholds, all these other things out there in, in, that you're hearing in the public, but I know that the, the, the policy that we have from Eric is, is sound and addresses all those concerns. Eric, do you have any comments that you'd like to make on that?
No, Chief. Like we talked about, the, our policies across the country have been under review for the past couple of weeks. And, and like you said, I, I had been a strong proponent of chokehold, addressing chokeholds long ago. And so we were, our policies were, had those required standards that we're now seeing individuals across the country requesting to be placed in. And again, one of the things I think the chief said is that Connecticut has been in front of the curve on that. I think it's because we had been under such intense scrutiny in 2012 from East Haven with the Department of Justice. And so there has been a lot more focus placed in Connecticut than in other places of the country. So the one thing that is beneficial for you as counselors is that the structure that is in place by police officer standards and training and class and the accreditation standards here in Connecticut are a higher standard than most places in the country.
Thanks, Eric. Well, one other item that I think you should know about is what it takes to become a police officer here in this department, but really it's a standard application process throughout the state of Connecticut. I can tell you, having gone to the FBI academy, and I'm sure Eric can attest to this, he's been to a bunch of different agencies across the country, Connecticut does a pretty good job. We're not perfect, but we do a pretty good job on how we select and hire candidates. Admittedly, right now, the applicant pool is low. I don't think the current state of affairs helps that. I, as I told you, I'm a second generation police officer and I can, I can tell you the Fizaro boys aren't too eager about thinking about law enforcement. And that's because it's a sign of the times. And that is unfortunate because it put food on my table as a kid and it put food on theirs as well. But if an applicant wants to become a police officer, and you can see on this flow chart, they take a written exam. In the past, we've used exclusively the Law Enforcement Council of Connecticut to administer that exam. Prior to this, I had looked at other options and we are still using the Law Enforcement Council, but we're also going to the Connecticut Chiefs where it's a greater pool of applicants and it gets to longer. Does it, is that flow chart showing on my screen?
No, Chief, it's not. We still have the complaints slide up. Do you have the other one you could advance to?
Is that, is that?
Oops.
Okay, let me try it now. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
About that?
Yes, thank you.
You got it now? Okay. So, so what we did, what I did prior to, prior to what's going on now, I had contacted my partners at the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association. They administer a test that goes out throughout Connecticut. It draws from probably a deeper pool of applicants than what we do with just the law enforcement council, which really centers on Eastern Connecticut. So my expectation and hope at the time was to draw my more diverse crowd that would hopefully be, be suitable candidates for this agency. So an applicant takes a written exam and in this case, well, for the sake of argument, we'll say it's the, the law enforcement council and the Connecticut Police Chiefs exam. They're required to take a physical agility test. And there's a standard set of criteria that they're evaluated against, put out by the Cooper Institute for Aerobic Research. If they pass those two, they move on to an oral board. And that's usually done here under the auspices of a human resources department. May have some input from the law enforcement council who will come here and monitor it as well and provide people from other agencies to sit on that oral board, or we may have officers from our own agency sit on it. Once they've made it through that, the top folks are, are put on an eligibility list from our human resource, resources department, and they're forwarded to me where I conduct interviews. And then I rank order them. Those that pass my interview that are suitable for further, going on further in the process are sent to a polygraph. And maybe not everybody's familiar with the polygraph, but you should be familiar with the lie detector. We have a detective here that's trained as a, as a polygraph examiner. That polygraph report is scripted by the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. There, it gets into a lot of things. Most states do not do polygraph exams. Our surrounding states do not poly, polygraph people. I will tell you, that is the number one differentiator between someone getting hired and not hired in police work in Connecticut. It is very intrusive. It is, there's things that people have in their background that they certainly don't want other people to know. And there's, as I explain it to the applicants, there's two ways to fail it. Number one, you lie. And number two, you admit to something that's incompatible with law enforcement. And I could get into a host of those examples, but there's a lot of things that I think that were you to be aware of. You would say that is not compatible with police work and that person, that person ought not be a police officer in this department. From there, they go into a psychological exam. And if they pass the psychological exam, that's done by a licensed practitioner, they're, they're sent forward for a comprehensive background investigation that again is very intrusive, gets into financial stuff, gets into past associations, a lot of things. And if they pass through that, we send them to a medical evaluation and then they become eligible to be a, a member of this department. That's typical of any department in Connecticut, but again, it's much more complex than I think you will see in other states. And it does help us make sure that we have the best folks we can to hire. Doesn't eliminate everything, but it is an arduous process for someone to get to. So someone doesn't just come and say, I want to be a police officer. And even some of those candidates that are attractive to us, that we want to have in our agency, don't make it through that process and they're eliminated. The, the other part that you need to know is that officers need to maintain certification. We have a training officer here, Sergeant Rich Sawyer, who maintains that, those credentials. And we get them through the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. And if an officer does certain activities, and this was just recently expanded through the post council meeting two weeks ago. If, if for some reason they're arrested and convicted of a felony charge, as well as several other criteria, which I, I can't name to you right now, they are decertified as a police officer permanently. That list is available to you right now. It's at your fingertips at the post website. You can find that, you can Google that. And you'll see officers that, that have been decertified in Connecticut can no longer be police officers for a variety of reasons. That was expanded by post council action two weeks ago, meaning the criteria for that is, is more encompassing than it was once. So I'm happy and proud to say that no member of this department has ever been decertified. But in fact, that's a tool that if an officer does not meet the standards of law enforcement here in Connecticut, that they will not be a cop here in Connecticut anymore. We've adopted the, the use of force policy as, as we talked about. We do annual use of force training with our officers. We're fortunate to have several of them within the department. In fact, two of them are putting together a new lesson plan to initiate some, some use of force training for our officers over the summer in response to some of the things that have come up now, just as a reminder and to, to re, you know, reinforce good practices. Firearms training is what is characterized as, well, use of a firearm in law enforcement is a high risk, but low frequency event, meaning it doesn't happen that often. But when it does, it's high risk for a lot of reasons, for reasons that we've got two attorneys on the, on the, on the call here today, that they could probably talk better than I can, but certainly the liability, but also the risks and dangers to the people associated with it. You, you saw from the previous slides, the amount of force that our officers have used. So they're, they're, they're very adept at using their powers of persuasion and their skillsets as, as good communicators to avoid that. So we have a very robust training program internally, but I'm an endorser of, of as much training as possible. We take care, we take advantage of a lot of the programs that Eric and, and other individuals out there provide for leadership and, and members of agencies. Our officers are very, very well trained. We do have, thanks to you, a pretty good budget to do that, and I hope to maintain that, if not expand it. We provide you annual use of force training. Diversity, I think that, that was talked about with, with the town manager. Can we do a better job of that? Absolutely. And I don't, I don't think that you'd catch any argument from me or anyone else on that. But the challenge for us now is to get people into this profession. And that's something that I certainly hope the diversity committee, members of this body can help with. But again, I, I wanted to explain to you the process of getting someone hired as a police officer so that you're familiar with it because many people come that are interested and can't make it through that. But we want to make it attractive to, to, to certain applicants so that we can expand that diversity. Oversight is one of those topics that I've heard a lot about. We do have oversight from the post council, as I told you before. We're, we're, we're moving toward accreditation. In fact, last year we had an inspection, a mock inspection from a former chief in, up in Cape Cod, Whalen, that, that, that works with Eric Daigle and, and came down here and gave us tips on things that we need to do in order to get us to that accreditation standard. More so, you know, as far as oversight goes, I, I also think it's important to, to point out, I, like everybody, you know, I have a boss, deputy chief has a boss, we all have people that we work for and, and ultimately it's for this body here and for the public as a whole. So, you know, civilian oversight, I'm all in favor of it. We have it now. I don't, I don't make decisions in a bubble. Certainly when we have those issues that I talked you about before, which are use of force, significant liabilities to the town, personnel issues, complaints, those are all socialized with my boss and usually with the HR director and, and town attorney as well. So when those decisions are made, there is familiarity with it. Clearly there are some things that based on the sensitivity of it are, are kept, kept under wraps for as long as they need to, but, but ultimately they're public information. In fact, in the room I'm sitting in right now, we provided information to the London Day a couple of weeks ago in response to their request and provided as much transparency and, and available information as humanly possible. We are looking at making sure I hit all the topics here I was asked to, to talk about. Resolutional responses resolved, as I described before, in our, we do complete reports in accordance with those. So certainly that stuff is, is things that are publicly available. And here's one item that I want to hit on because I've heard a lot about transparency and accountability. I've said it to you before, I think in, in other meetings, but one of the, probably the more unpopular decisions I've made as a police chief was that to go with body cameras. We did that three years ago. We were the first agency, first municipal agency in, in Southeastern Connecticut to have body cameras. We are one of the few that still has body cameras this day. We, we have agencies from across the region that come and seek our input because they're struggling with that themselves. We've recently hosted members of the Stonington Police Department, as well as the New London Police Department, who are looking at body worn cameras. Despite it being one of those decisions that I think was not the most popular, I know it to be the best, one of the best decisions I made. It speaks to transparency. It speaks to accountability. Our officers wear them to the calls they go to. It has provided us with a teaching tool where an officer that's maybe in training or supervisor reviews something and finds something that an officer could have done better, it could have done differently, it's available. There have been complaints that have come to my office or to the deputy chief that we've looked at. We've involved members of this council and some of those complaints. We've involved other individuals within the town structure, including the town manager, town attorney and HR, when complaints have come forward and we've reviewed those in the right circumstances. What I mean by that is there's, there's policy stuff that we adhere to. There are, there are agreements that we came to with the, with the, the union to make sure that there's, they're aware or the person involved is aware for reviewing body worn camera footage. It has been helpful. I think it shows our officers doing the right thing when they're out in the field. So again, I think that speaks to transparency and accountability. It is information that we share when we have to share it or we're asked for it. And, and we have an audit trail and every month, a supervisor is assigned to do audits, random audits of those body worn camera videos. There's a retention cycle. If something is non-criminal, it does go away within the retention cycle, which is a year. If there are things that are going for prosecution, we have the ability to share that video with the state attorney's office. If there are things that are going for prosecution, we have the ability to share that video with the state attorney's office. So, and again, I'm a member of the Racial Profiling Prohibition Project. There's, we've been very busy the last couple of years. I'm happy that that's a collaborative effort, that, that the people that sit around that table come from all different organizations and the voices are heard of many. I happen to represent police work, myself and the chief of Cheshire, Neil Dreyfus, are the ones that speak on behalf of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, and we've had very collaborative discussions. And I think that the end result is that the, the, the work that's done by that body now is constantly improving. And, and, and I'm, I'm pretty proud of that and I'm happy to be a part of it. You know, I've, I've hit, I've hit a lot of things. You know, I know the RTM had some questions. I had been forwarded them the other day. I did come up with some responses to that. I, I can hit that very quickly without, without boring you and going over the questions that were asked, because I think you all received that. But the first one's about 911 call data. It's important to note, and I attached that, I, I do suspect that you've received that. The town of Groton, we service a 911 PSAP, which means all 911 calls for all of Groton come into the communication center here. That includes fire departments, Groton, Long Point, Groton City Police. They come here and are transferred out. So if a 911 call comes for something in a different jurisdiction, we transfer it to that jurisdiction. But the, the, the primary station answering point is here.
One second, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you also send those via email so people could read them?
I, I absolutely can. I'll send them through the town manager. I, I'm actually working on a different computer, so I can't send them right now.
So we can't read.
But I'd be happy to do that. Maybe that would avoid boring everybody with reading this stuff. We've talked a little bit about the use of force policies. Again, I hit on it very briefly and, and, you know, I'm confident that our, our policy is, is sound. I know it is. Another question that's come up in recent years is shooting at vehicles. We don't, there is never a, there's, there are no nevers in this line of business. And I think Eric can point to that. We, we don't, we don't train people to shoot at vehicles. Typically the, that little bullet has little effect on a vehicle. But one of the, one of the things that we do through training is to make sure we don't put our officers in vulnerable positions where they may be may feel that their options are limited. We provide training towards that. But yet, you know, there's some, also needs to recognize that there are times when there's an exception. And I'd point to you places like Nice, France, where there were vehicles used as weapons. Same thing happened in New York City, but as a general rule, we don't, and state policy prohibits that. Have officers received training and de-escalation? The answer is yes. Officers receive that in, in the academy. I, I kinda, I spoke about this with a group of legislators last week and I said, you know, when I went through the academy, we called it verbal judo. It was, and I, I get a grin out of Eric there. He heard the same term. He remembers that. It was the ability to deflect, maybe hostile. When you were detecting someone to be hostile, you could kind of deflect some of the words just by your tone and tenor and, and using certain key phrases to avoid that. Well, we've, we've continued that. Officers receive de-escalation training while they're in the academy. But moreover, we have officers that are training crisis intervention and that is of our staff. It's 31 officers that have done that. Typically we started from the most senior officers and worked our way down because officers coming out of the academy have the most contemporary training. But the bulk of our patrol force has been training crisis intervention training. Others, they've, they've recently rolled it out online. So our officers that haven't gone will be asked to do that. Again, cost associated with that between not just the cost for the, the class itself, but also replacement costs to make sure we have sufficient people on patrol. Are there efforts to diversify our force? Yes. We, we have sent officers in the last couple of years to recruiting events throughout southeastern Connecticut and beyond to try to attract, attract candidates to this agency. That effort needs to continue. I know Bob Zagami has been working on it beyond just the police department. So we're certainly, we're certainly open to that. Trying to do outreach to, to, you know, some of the facilities here in town, like the Navy Base and the National Guard Armory that has a significant population that may be interested in this line of work. I, I talked about oversight, but ultimately oversight depends on two things. Number one, it's the quality of people you have working. The policies, actually three things, the policies you have in place and the supervision. And I think the number one part of that is supervision. And we look at some of the recent events and certainly what I saw in Minneapolis. One thing that jumped out at me and, and you folks know how I feel about that. I put it on our Facebook. There was no supervision. There was not a supervisor at that scene. When our officers go on patrol, there's always a field supervisor as well as supervisor in the building. So supervision and good supervision is key and it gets to the training component of that. There's a question about the ethics commission. I, I, I do have to defer to Eileen Duggan on that. But yeah, you know, our officers are subject to ethics violations. You know, if there's a problem in, in, in this body certainly knows what that consists of, but our officers are town employees. So if there was something that was in line with that violation of that ethics code, certainly it applies to them. And I gave you, I think I gave you a pretty good picture of what we've got for accounting of complaints that have been lodged over the last several years. I, I do have a little narrative in here. And then there's a question about the FOIA request that came from the day. We were responsive to that. You know, unfortunately we got that on a Thursday when we're planning for a large scale demonstration here in town. Deputy chief and, and members of our staff did exceptional work trying to get what they could in short order. Was it comprehensive and incomplete? No. In, in, you know, we have reasonable expectations. In fact, the FOIA commission says that you are able to respond acknowledging that within four days. Yet despite that, you know, Deputy Chief Gately was able to put stuff together. And as a follow-up, we had a reporter from the day come in and, and take a look at stuff that she was interested in. So and, and the last point on this, again, you know, ideally it would be great to have this info from the city of Groton, Long Point. I concur. I know they're professional agencies. I'm sure they would welcome the opportunity to share what they're doing with you as well. I would, I would encourage that. I think that again, we, we work well together. But, but, you know, we, we certainly have somewhat different missions and, and unique missions in certain respects, but I think collectively we do a good job for policing of the entirety of Groton. So I've talked about a lot of stuff. I, I hope I was able to answer some of your questions before you ask them, but I'm sure there's more. And that concludes my, my brief. I'm certainly happy to answer questions or hear what, hear what this body has to say and anything that, that I can comment on.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. So, so as I stated earlier, we have responses from Groton, Long Point in the city. And council would love to have your responses via email as well. So if you could do that after the meeting or tomorrow, that would be wonderful. I want to ask Mr. Burt if he had anyone else that he wanted to speak next before we opened it up to council questions.
No, that is, that's it.
That's it? Okay. So we are on the third item of our agenda for this evening and we're at 8:30. So now we're in the council portion. If people have questions, please, I ask that you just be respectful of other counselors who also may wish to ask questions. Does anyone have a question that would like to start off? I see there's a hand. Hold on. Okay, Counselor Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for, for your presentation. I sent you an email over the weekend and I'm sorry for, for being so close to today's date regarding a plethora of issues, whether it be, you know, your department's use of force policies, policies relating to de-escalation, policies relating to bias training. And I, I knew John sent me back some of your responses, so, so thank you for that. My question to you is that, you know, a big, big question right now is, is when deadly use of force is justified? And I'm just reading the, the newest policy. There is sort of some of the exceptions include defending, and I, I can read it verbatim. Defending the officer or a third person from the imminent threat of death or serious bodily injury. And, and one thing we've seen in the last month, I, I know there was in the case of in Atlanta, where there was the gentleman who was apprehended at, at the drive-through in at Wendy's. And he ended up taking, removing the taser from, from the officer's holster and then using it towards him. And, and so in that case, if, you know, if this were to say happening in Groton, it would seem, it would seem like that use of force would be justified. And so in, whereas, you know, I think the many people would recognize probably not, or should not be justified in that case. So sort of, you know, I don't know if you're at all familiar with that story or, but, uh, you know. Yeah, if you can just, you know, illuminate on that a little bit.
Sure. Well, I'm, I'm certainly not a Supreme Court justice, but, but we, we have case law that we operate within. Our officers are trained in it. The prevailing case law that we look at for use of force issues, particularly deadly force, Tennessee versus Garner, Graham versus Connor, objective reasonableness, all that stuff, all that stuff that, you know, an officer is required to make split deck, split decisions under, under very tense and rapidly evolving situations. You know, that particular case, I, I think is, is different than what we saw certainly in Minneapolis. I would encourage folks to watch the entire video when you watch it, start to finish, kind of get the flavor of where it's going and how things happen very quickly and how it changed in a moment's notice. You know, unfortunately officers are put in those situations and, and with the ability of hindsight, you can go back and review them and have a very critical look at it. You know, I, I don't want to put myself in those officer's shoes. I've been in a situation where I've been fired at. I've, I've had that happen and others officers have too. Those are life altering moments, right? That, that, those are things that happen that you don't want to happen. I can tell you officers throughout their career, very, very few of them have to use their firearm. But I think it's, I think it's premature to offer too much in that because I think that, I think that more information is coming out clearly. Arrests were made of those officers. But I think we have to understand that our officers are put in these situations where they're in a physical confrontation. Notwithstanding this one, they, they do have the ability to use force when they need to under those situations that are prescribed by law and that they're trained in. I, I, I do encourage you to watch the entirety of that video. I, I think that will help you understand how, how that evolved maybe more quickly than even the officers expected. But I, I'm not sure if I'm giving you an answer that you want, but I, or, or that you, that, that is responsive to your question. But our officers are trained in use of force and everything is different. There's, you know, unfortunately there isn't a script to follow. Eric, I, I know you do a lot of work on use of force stuff, issues pertaining to deadly force. You know, I've sat in some of your training sessions. Is, is there anything that you think should be added clearly using, you know, using deadly force is a big deal. And it's something that we do train our officers on, but it's again, one of those high risk, low frequency events. But I, I, I think it'd be improper to me to give you a yes or no decision. That was good, that was bad. It shouldn't have happened there. It should have happened that, that, that one. I think that there's, it's not as, as cut and dry as maybe some others that we've seen. Eric, do you have anything to add or?
No, I think you did a good job, Chief. I mean, again, it's, uh, it's still under investigation. The officer's been arrested. I, I don't know. I don't know when the counselor recommended, said that he perceived that it would be justified under your policy. I guarantee the policy that they have is the same policy that you have because it's the law of Tennessee versus Garner. So I, I don't know how that assumption was made, but the threat, the definition of deadly force and the use of deadly force by officers, Supreme Court law. And that's what officers are, are taught. And that is what is outlined in policies across the country.
What, what Counselor Baumgartner, what you might also be interested to learn, or, or maybe you're, you know this, but in Connecticut, there is a for officer involved shootings, an agency does not investigate it themselves. It's referred to the state's attorney's office who oversees the investigation. But in fact, if something were to happen in this area, it would actually go to a different state's attorney to avoid any perception of, of impropriety. So it's investigated by, certainly deadly physical force is investigated by a state, outside state's attorney. We've got a couple of those cases ongoing right now in Connecticut. You know, clearly they're going to look at policy. They're going to look at case law. They're going to determine whether, in fact, that was a justified shooting or not. And then, you know, ultimately they'll, they'll bring that in the form of a warrant to a judge to review and decide whether that was the sufficient probable cause existed for an arrest to be made or that the officer acted justly. Does that, does that address your question?
A little bit. Sort of my other question, because I know there are a lot of counselors with significant amount of questions. Banning pretextual stops. So, you know, having probable cause when pulling over, you know, a citizen and what you want to avoid is, you know, someone gets pulled over and then, you know, what was supposed to be, you know, that person being pulled over for simply a traffic infraction, whether, you know, they're speeding or something or, you know, broken taillight ends up becoming something far, far more significant in, you know, obviously the, the officer would not have had a knowledge of that rule, you know, law violation had that person not been pulled over. So is that something that the, you know, the police department does? You know, they're only pulling over individuals with sufficient probable cause?
If our officers are conducting a motor vehicle stop, there needs to be a violation that they observe. They cannot stop a vehicle unless they observe it that, and, and so there has to be an underlying reason for that motor vehicle stop. But if I understand your question, do our officers just arbitrarily stop vehicles? No, there's, there's got to be some reason to, to stop them, a reasonable suspicion. The standard that applies to conducting a motor vehicle stop is that they have observed a violation. During the course of that, if they observe something in the vehicle in plain view, can that extend that search? Sure. There's exceptions to the search warrant requirement when it comes to certain types of events. But our officers don't unnecessarily detain people for other reasons. If there are suitable reasons to stop them and then that stop results in other things. For instance, they stop a vehicle, maybe they observed it go through a stop sign and then they determine that the officer may have been under the influence of something. Certainly they can prolong that stop to continue that investigative effort to see if that person's under the influence. If they make an arrest and that leads to other things, you know, finding narcotics in the car, you know, certainly that is something that, you know, if they've, they've done that within the bounds of their training and the, and the legal aspects that are set, that's certainly permissible.
And lastly, to what extent does the police department cooperate with ICE?
I'm sorry. We have a policy that's in draft right now. I think I outlined that in, in the response that we sent. But ultimately, you know, we don't go out, we don't, we don't enforce detainers for ICE. We don't do any of that. If there is a legal reason to hold someone because they're in custody for other reasons, you know, federal authorities have some need for that individual, then, then we comply with what we have to comply with by law. But we do not act as agents of ICE. That is not within our scope. That's their responsibility, not ours.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We have with us tonight moderator Evan, and according to the town charter, moderator Evan is an ex-official member. So she has a question for the chief. So moderator Evan, would you like to speak to the chief?
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Oh, thank you, Chief Frisaro, for this presentation. It's been very useful and for the information that you compiled. I had three questions and one was based on the flow chart that you showed about how you hire your officers. And I was wondering, you know, just if there was any kind of effort to do a social media background check on these officers? And if there's a social psychologist who might try to get at some of the core values that the, the officers hold during that, maybe the polygraph or at some point in that flow chart to see if they indeed do hold racist attitudes?
Great question. I, about, I'm, I'm looking over my shoulder, the deputy chief, about three or four weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we did a wholesale revamp of our background investigation. Clearly social media today is a really a, a primary form of communication and people getting their information, particularly among our youth and those people that we see most likely coming into police work. We did a wholesale revamp of our background investigation process. An officer was assigned to take the lead on that based on other products that are out there. And, and a much more extensive review of that social media component has been done. To speak to the social psychological aspect of that, we do work with a, a local psychological firm. We provide as much information to them. The, the background investigator actually provides information to that psychologist. So I'm happy to report to you that I'd certainly love to have this conversation a little bit further because I think you, I think you know a lot about this. But we've really retooled our background investigation to rule out and try to rule out that stuff. I will tell you though, my experience has been the, as I indicated before, the polygraph seems to come up with a lot of that stuff. One of the key questions that goes into the background of an individual during a polygraph exam talks about those associations that could be, you know, white supremacist groups, gang affiliations, things like that. That is part of the packet that a polygraph examiner goes through with a potential candidate. And, and at the end, the polygraph examiner provides a report that outlines all those things. You know, without violating anything here, we have, we have eliminated people from this department for a variety of reasons after the polygraph exam. And I guess probably the safest way for me to put that.
Thank you. I was, you mentioned that, that there is kind of a de facto type of civilian oversight of the force by having the HR director look at any complaints that are lodged. And so I don't know exactly how complaints are reviewed, but I mean, you kind of gave us a brief schematic. I, I do, do they, I mean, our ethics commission is fairly new. Do you envision that group being part of this review at some point?
As my, my understanding of the ethics commission, it would probably be on the scope of what their duties are prescribed as through, through either town charter or what's been drafted, but I'll certainly talk with the town attorney about that. Here, and I, I want to be clear on what I said. I don't, the- Here, and I, I want to be clear on what I said. I don't, the, the process goes like this. When we have a complaint. It's fielded by however it came in. If it's the desk officer that received it, they're always routed to the deputy chief, who for lack of a better term is the. Professional standards commander for the department. So basically he takes those, he assigns a control number to it. And he will assign a non, some disassociated supervisor within the department to take a preliminary look at it. Gather reports, look at body worn camera footage. Take the source document or the information that was provided by the complainant and conduct an inquiry. If that seems to be something that violates law or a significant policy, then it won't go that route. It'll go immediately to an internal affairs investigation. And at that point, certainly there's some other legal parameters and, 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 you know, rights that employees have that are codified and contracted in law. That need to be respected and we do respect those. At the end of the process though, however, a response is crafted for the person who made the complaint. I provide a copy to generally the town attorney and town manager. HR may be involved, particularly if there's aspects of this that relate to employment and may result in some significant discipline. Certainly they're involved. So I don't want you to think that it's exclusively just the HR director. Many times because we're dealing with sometimes complex legal or, or. Workplace issues that need to be reviewed through, through the town attorney's office. I'll work with. Attorney Duggan or members of her staff to take a look at that, to make sure that we are complying with. Not just the contractual requirements, but also some of the legal standards. If in fact, and, and this happens, I don't want to say regularly, but it has happened and certainly it's happened in my tenure. If we have something. That is, could potentially be construed as a violation of law. It's immediately referred to the state's attorney's office. We have a liaison from the state's attorney's office, an inspector assigned to this department. That we're to contact when things of that nature happen. So if it's something that happens. In the middle of the night, we call that inspector. We usually make them advise, if it's a minor policy violation, then clearly that's not something we'd bring to their attention. But if it's something that could result in criminal prosecution, or it could be something where we think there's a conflict of interest. They're immediately notified and they're brought into the loop as well. And that's again, you know, state agency is the prosecutor out of. Attorney Regan's office in London and they have inspectors that are assigned there, or it could be referred to the chief state's attorney's office. In fact. As prescribed by law and, and policy is, you know, racial profiling complaints in Connecticut for every department. If there's an allegation of that and the department looks into it, it's required to be forwarded to an attorney at the state's attorney's office, chief state's attorney's office. In Rocky Hill. That happens in this department. It happens every department in Connecticut. That's, that's the requirement. So if we had a complaint like that, we could refer it to them. But again, if there is something that we have concerns about legal aspects of it or potentially conflict of interest, then we refer it to the state's attorney's office. But at all times. You know, I regularly brief John Burt on things that are going on. I make sure he's aware of it. If I have questions about the legal aspects of it, I will contact attorney Duggan. Certainly if there are HR issues that I need to, to socialize with, with Bob Zagami and his staff, we do that too. So it's. You know, that's kind of the process. And again, there, there are certain aspects of this and. Established rules that we have to follow. So we make sure we do that, but it's a team approach and I make sure that any of these things, you know. Any things that, that could come out and be detrimental to the department or be embarrassing to the department or to the town and make sure I speak with them and they're well aware of what's going on.
Would, would you, would you be opposed to the, the formation of a true civilian oversight committee?
I would certainly be willing to talk about, you know, what that would consist of. And certainly, you know, when it comes to utilizing. The stuff that we have at our disposal, I, I think that, I don't have an objection to that. And I think what John Burt had, had forward at the beginning is probably a good start. I, I, it goes to that transparency and I think that's what you're getting at. I, I do feel that maybe there needs to be some. Understanding of, of what these are, you know, clearly if someone. Violates policy or they violate something that, that doesn't result in any significant discipline or may not. Require that. And then I think that's something that we want, you know, make sure it's handled at the proper level. Certainly egregious acts, things that could result in termination or. Acts of that nature, you know, that needs to be, and others need to be made aware of that. I'm, I'm good with that. But I think there's a lot of complexities that we would have to look at and I, I don't, I don't ascribe to knee jerk reactions to things. So I want to make sure that if we're doing things that were done deliberately with a lot of thought and rationale behind why we would be doing that.
So a few years ago, at Avery Point, a young man was attempting to commit suicide. And I believe that rubber bullets were used and he ended up committing suicide, unfortunately. I was wondering if there was a review at that time of that police officer or the police officers who were engaged in, in that altercation?
Full disclosure.
Process there?
Yeah, full disclosure and, and I was the commanding officer of the state police SWAT team at the time. That has gone under legal review multiple times. Process involved the state's attorney's office and multiple others. I'm, I'm going to be a bit guarded to talk about that because I am a part of that. I am a party to that. So I. As you might imagine, reluctant to talk about something that's had legal action associated with it and we need to be careful of it. I, I don't know whether you are aware of that and asking the question or not, but, but certainly that had multiple facets looked at it from. Multiple different agencies, including federal courts, which. You're, you're welcome to take a look at those decisions.
I was wondering, do you got, does your, your force use those rubber bullets often or was that the only time or how often?
Those were specific, our force does not. Our force has what's called less lethal capabilities. Right now those are tasers. So those are things that are, our officers are trained to use and do use under the right circumstances. But that was a, a different, a different system that was unique to the state police tactical unit.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Granatowski.
You're welcome. We have counselors waiting to ask their questions. So Counselor Bordelain, you had your hand up. Counselor Bordelain was here and she did have her hand up. Until she checks back in, did anyone else want to ask a question? We are at eight fifty-two and we are on the third item on the agenda for the evening. Counselor Obree, go ahead.
I'd just like to thank you. Your presentation has been very impressive and very well done. I'm just wondering if I might be able to engage future, future conversation about having some. I don't know what the right term is, but volunteers are people that assist the police that have had. Maybe past experience with policing or something like that. I still am an advocate for having more feet on the ground. And I know with what we have now, it's a near impossibility. So I'm wondering if possibly for the, you know, so that the downtown Groton area, the downtown Mystic area could have somebody. That just really gets to know everybody and is just around the area. I, I think it would be such an addition to the force and. I know there's liabilities, but I still, I still think it could be a wonderful addition.
Sure. One of the proposals that we spoke about, and I think town manager Burt mentioned was. A concept called community service officers. They're not sworn police officers. They don't carry weapons. They don't carry firearms. They're people kind of, I think what you're, what you're getting at and many times they serve as ambassadors. May help out in certain aspects, could provide additional things. I, I, I'm certainly endorsing, endorsing that. I think that would probably be good. You know, many of the things that you're talking about, I think are, are. If I could digress for a little bit, you know. Police officers, we need to have positive interactions with the public. Because quite often when police officers interact with the public, it isn't under the best circumstances, right? I mean, if an officer is going to the scene of a car accident, someone's gravely injured. If they're showing up to a domestic violence incident and somebody gets arrested, mom and the police officer may be taking mom and dad, mom or dad out of the house in handcuffs. Police officers go to all these different things where maybe. People would prefer to forget about that and, and sometimes that hostility is taken out on the officer. So having those positive interactions with the community are completely appropriate and, and I encourage them. And I know you've mentioned it several times, you know, having officers out walking around and going into businesses. We certainly want that because we do think that builds a connection with the community and certainly builds trust and, and. In partnership, which are things that we want. So yeah, I, I would certainly endorse that. You know, our police officers, they want to be part of that as well. They want to be those, they, they enjoy walking. Downtown Mystic and making sure that, you know, they go into the businesses and that they walk. Into establishments throughout the town and have a positive impact and positive impression on the public. So if, if you're suggesting that we do more of that, I'm with you. I, I absolutely endorse it. You know, if, if we have folks that are volunteers, we'd embrace it. And I, I've said this before, I believe to this group, and some of you have taken me up on it. If you have an interest in doing that, we have a ride along policy. I know Counselor Franco has taken advantage of that, gets to go firsthand and see what our officers do. I will tell you, sometimes it's boring, but sometimes it's not. Sometimes there's stuff that, you know, is, you, you get to see some of. Some of the things our officers do and, and some of the, some of the situations that are placed in, in, and that is enlightening. You get to see things through a different perspective. I welcome you. I mean, there are some requirements and maybe COVID isn't the best time to do it with putting two people in a car. But, but if any of you are interested in that and want to do that, by all means. You know, we endorse that and, and certainly the, the department is open. Clearly I want, you know, my boss. I defer to him, but, but if any of you have any needs that you need to address over here and, and talk to us, that, that's certainly available as well.
What would you suggest the first step would be? Should we be discussing it as a council? Should we just have people that are interested meet with you? How do we, how do we begin?
We do that right, I, I, either one of those is fine. I can tell you, we do that regularly. In fact, we've take, we take on interns. We have. A, a young lady here in this community who I think will be a tremendous asset to, to us. That's going to be starting soon, being an intern here, that some of you undoubtedly are familiar with, but, but. You point them in our direction, we certainly can set up a program. We don't have. Maybe a good start would be to codify something. And what I mean by that is there are some mechanisms in place that would allow us to do that. Outside the scope of policing in general. I mean, our police officers are still the ones that have to do that job. But if there are, if there's some programs that maybe we can institute, I'm. I'd certainly welcome that. I'm, I'm open to that. So if you have ideas, I'd, I'd love to hear them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Obree.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other hands. Counselor Bordelain did have her hand up, but she's not here. So I thank you for your time. I'm sure this will be an ongoing discussion. Okay. I was looking for blue hands. So I see Counselor Franco has a question.
Yes, thank you. So sometimes things come up that say, let me do an ordinance or there's things. When a police officer is dealing with a situation and they have to use their best judgment. And some, so I'm sort of wondering, how is best judgment set? Is it? Set by the department? Is it set sort of by your standards? Is it the police officer has his own best judgment? I was just sort of wondering.
Sure. Well, I, I, what, what I think you're getting at. Reasonableness, maybe that's what you're getting at. You know, officers hate, let's face it. Policing is an imperfect perfection, profession. And the reason it's imperfect is it's got human beings in it. So human beings are. Are, are imperfect, right? So, you know, officers do exercise good judgment out there. Are you alluding to best practices? Maybe that's what you're, you meant.
Ordinance and. The officer can choose to maybe let somebody off with a warning or they could give them a ticket or they.
That's discretion. Officers do have discretion, meaning, you know, just like a prosecutor and a judge has discretion as well. There's certain discretion that's exercised at lower levels. For instance. You know, let's say, and, and here's an example I like to give. An officer stops a vehicle. And then the vehicle was speeding, went through a light and, and you stopped the car and all of a sudden you realize that the person maybe. Has kids in the car, they're heading to the hospital, you know, you, you exercise your discretion. Okay, listen. I understand you're going to the hospital, slow it down. You, I'm not going to give you a ticket, although I could because there was a violation. I'm not going to, I'm exercising discretion. Because the, the, the end result is that we're doing things in order to make you safe. You know, the whole reason for traffic enforcement is to, to change future driving, driving habits to make sure people are safe. So officers do exercise discretion. Some instances discretion is limited. We, we have discretion, our officers can exercise it, but they work under a supervisor, the supervisors to monitor that discretion. Other things we don't have discretion in. The, the most notable example here in Connecticut is domestic violence. Domestic violence laws in Connecticut are very strict and it's to protect people that have been abused chronically and that, that could lead to. You know, more serious consequences and even injuries and death to those individuals. So our officers don't have. Discretion when it comes to domestic violence. And what I mean by that is that if there is probable cause for an arrest, the dominant aggressor. Is the one who is to be arrested. So that is prescribed in law and general statute that our officers need to be familiar with. So in that case, they can't just say, well, yeah, there's a violation of law here, but I'm not going to make arrests. They must make an arrest. That's required. But again, you know, discretion. It's one of those things where it has to be exercised properly. You know, there are certain things, you know, you, you, you can't overlook. But you know, minor offenses, an officer can exercise that discretion. And in fact, many times it's in the best interest of the people involved and the officer. You know, if, if an officer gets, if, if the point is received by the individual. That doesn't really result in a ticket or maybe even arrest in certain circumstances. That's exercising good judgment and an officer, again, another example would be an officer finds multiple violations during a traffic stop and says, hey, listen. I found all these violations, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna issue you the, the ticket for this particular one. You know, the other ones would amount to $500 in fines. That's, that's not going to build trust. That's not going to build a good relationship with the community. That's just going to have you alienated against the police because we wrote you for every violation. But in, in other instances, that may be appropriate, you know, depending on the circumstances. So. Kind of a, kind of a nebulous answer. I'm sorry for that. I hope, I hope it kind of, kind of at least nibbled around the edges and kind of answered what you were looking for.
There's sort of review is what you're saying by supervisors to make sure that, you know. You're being utilized in the best way. Is that what you're saying? And if you, if a police officer may be going in a wrong direction, they'll try, they'll try and get them.
Well, yeah, well, listen.
I'm sorry. Is it sort of like a department standard of like, you know? If, um, denies complaints, that's sort of like out of discretion. On some things. And it's also set maybe by the department on certain circumstances when it should be implemented and things of that nature. I think it's just a gray area that sometimes I'm just wondering about.
I will tell you, in this line of work, there is a lot of gray area. You know, and, and sometimes there's differences between how certain officers will handle certain things. And that's the uniqueness that we're, we're looking for, right? I mean, that the different perspectives, different point of views. Sometimes an officer may determine that they're going to issue an infraction for a particular offense. Another officer may be able to communicate with that person in a way that convinces them that this is, you know. This, this can be handled without an infraction. Or in a third case, it may be an officer that does something. You know, as long as they're within those prescribed guidelines of law, you know, they're within that jurisdictional boundaries, those guardrails that kind of point them in that direction. Where they operate within those guide, guardrails, it can vary from officer to officer. Just like, you know, the, the, this body, when you come to your deliberations, you know, you have differences of, of perspective. And come to decisions as a group that may have varying points of view, just like that, an officer, while there, there are laws that they have to comply with. There are policies, there are regulations, they have to be operating within those guidelines and we expect supervisors to monitor them. And that's the greatest checks and balances, the supervisory staff that oversees the activities of, of officers. You know, you should be proud, I'm proud and, and, and happy with the supervisory staff that we have here. They're very talented and very committed. That's important to know. And, and many times, things don't even rise to my level where a corrective action is taken by a supervisor, that's taken by the sergeant. You know, addresses a particular concern, may offer counseling, either developmental counseling or see where an officer. You know, did something maybe incorrectly or could do it better in the future and they use that as a developmental tool. That starts right from the minute they walk into the academy and out of the academy through the FTO program and, you know. Fortunately for me, I have the deputy chief who he thinks if I'm doing something wrong, he's, he's pretty good to grab me and say, hey, chief, you need to, you need to look at it this way. So. He's been doing that for me for a long time.
And, and also when you talked about. I guess the sixth pillar from. Obama's initiative, which cares for officers. I think that's really important. And I also found that for police officers to wear so many hats. I mean, you can't be an expert in everything. And I think. It would be wise to have more mental health experts maybe helping the police force along with, you know, some kind of therapist and. Some other things that may help alleviate some of these things because I, I believe you're, you're right. A lot more is been put on the police force over the past so many years that. Wasn't like that quite so long ago. And I'm interested in. Reading through Mr. Burt's initiatives that he's pulling forward. And I'm interested in reading through Mr. Burt's initiatives that he's pulling forward and seeing how this works. I mean, because I, I mean, the police force is not my expertise. I work in accounting, I do HR, those are the things that I can tell a lot about. But the police, policing and how you're training and how you're implementing things and that's not my expertise. So I'm trying my best to learn as much as I can. And it's hard, but I also want to make sure that the people in our community are protected and they're treated fairly and decently and that everybody, there's an equality there that, that happens in our community and I hope it's happening. But, and I, and nobody has reached out to me to be, to say anything at the contrary. I mean, I went to the march, I listened to people, I heard some things that I did question and I, I wondered why. But then this is where I think maybe this isn't the only meeting we should be having. There should be many of these meetings and to, to find these things out. Because you gave us so much information tonight. And the town manager gave us information that we didn't have beforehand. And it's hard to like, I don't, I don't know where to go from here, basically, other than maybe have some future meetings and to learn more. Because basically that's the right thing I have to do is learn more. Not my field expertise.
Sure, you, you know, I, I think the important point to, you know, I didn't go over stuff at the beginning just for the sake of it and, and to inflate people's egos. I think it's important that, you know, you have police professionals. And, and, and our motto here is in partnership with the community. We are in partnership with the community. You have people that have a lot of experience. Now, our goal collectively, and I'm, I'm looking at the screen, everybody on here is to have the best agency we possibly can. And to have the best performers, the best officers, you know, best town counselors, best, you know, human resources folks, town employees as a whole. We all want that, the collective best interest. But, but I thought it was important to, for you to know, not only do you have people in, in this institution that have a lot of experience that you should turn to as being subject matter experts, but even these, these subject matter experts turn to people that we know are subject matter experts as well. That's why Eric was, was kind enough to join us tonight. That you know what we go to for source information, that you understand, when, when you hear these things in the public, who you can ask. And, and I, I do want you to ask me, I said it from the start, I welcome this. Because there's things out there that, that are in the public domain right now. A lot of things which are confusing. I know there's people out there in the public scratching their heads. I think it's important to point out how few times officers use force and how many complaints are made based on the, the number of calls that people go to. I mean, I think every one of us in our, in our personal and professional lives know that there are things in our, our, our professions that sometimes people aren't happy with and we have mechanisms to address that. If I wanna, you know, if I, if my, you know, if my neck hurts, I'm going to go to my doctor and have them check it out. They're the subject matter expert. If there's problems with the institution of policing, we should talk to the people that are at the leadership of those professions. And that's the police chiefs and people that have a vested interest up and down the ranks. But again, I think, I think we, I think we're on good footing. Are we perfect? No, absolutely not. No agency is. And again, it's because our folks are from the human race, you know. I, I, I had the privilege of being on a show with, with an RTM member the other day, Michael Whitehouse. And many of you may have been able to, if you haven't, I, you asked a lot of good questions too. We talked about policing and I talked about the fact that policing, as you pointed out, has gotten into a lot more things today than it was when Sir Robert Peel wrote his, you know, the, the Pelean principles back in 1829. All those hold true, but we're doing so much more and our expectations of police is so much higher. And the police officers that we get today have a lot of training, have a lot of education, but they're still human beings and they still are not, they're not perfect. I don't know of a doctor or a lawyer who is, but we don't pay our police officers like doctors and lawyers. We pay them as police officers, but yet they're, they're generalists that are asked to go to a whole bunch of different things. And, and while I agree and support and hope that we are able to get mental health professionals, not just for the people in the public, but for those things I talked about before, for our officers, the things that they have to endure. Please know that when, when people pick up the phone, they want someone now. And we are police, in, in, in this town, we happen to be the only 24 hour agency, the police department and the dispatch center. They expect someone to come. We don't have the, the luxury of saying, no, we're not going to respond, we're going to wait. Because in those instances, sometimes people that are in crisis hurt themselves or hurt others. Those are definitely incidents that we need to respond to. And, and what happens in those cases where someone is in crisis and they look to hurt themselves or someone else? There's still going to need to be a police element, but certainly getting, getting help and getting people the right resources at the right time is certainly something we endorse. And, and would it lift some of the burden off our officers? Yes, but it's certainly not going to eliminate the need for police and it's not gonna, it's not gonna need, it's not going to eliminate the need for good police training and good police policies and good police practices. And, and I really think good police leadership.
Thank you, Chief. I agree that, I think this is just the first step in the conversation. I think this is going to need to be an ongoing conversation and I'm hoping we'll have the opportunity to talk on several more occasions. Keeping in mind, it is now nine 10 and we are on item C out of H items. We have Counselor Bordelon is back with us, so she gets first dibs at a question and then Counselor Heat has his hand up.
I guess a minor more statement, some of the questions are asked, I think moderator Simmer brought up some great questions. I think that we do need a civilian review board. I know that some other town municipalities have such that are much more different and complex in the process. And I think it's really important that they move to that motto and really open it up so that it's a true review board of outside people involved within the community as well as stakeholders in the town. Looking at that, yes, no one is perfect, but from a standpoint, I heard a lot of things tonight that are very helpful and I appreciate it. But from a racial standpoint, we really need to get to the root of the problem. We can talk about what type of excessive force, but the real thing is the excessive force used on minorities. And that's my concern, concern for the, the whole department as a whole. But what, in light of everything that's got us to this point, it's excessive force on people of color, black, brown and black people. That's what I wanted to hear and talk about tonight. And so, once again, yes, I understand people wear many different hats. We do it in the medical field as well. What would that look like? Well, I, I mean, any person that was of any medical background, background that was at that call when someone was sitting on someone's neck like that, they would have told them right away, listen, I don't care what kind of badge you're wearing, holding someone like that is going to cause a complication and possibly death if you hold them any longer. Do we need a nurse for somebody to have a dual badge in, in towns where they are, you know, trained as an officer, but also have a full RN in medical disciplinary response in medical field, not just an EMT? I don't know, maybe you'll go somewhere else. But my concern is what does the minority community feel like today? As a mother of two males, you know, they have concerns. We, we don't have a household where we have records or have police involvement in a negative aspect. We have family members that are officers, but just by the basis of their skin color, there is concern. So we can say this whole list of things that was reached tonight and I took some notes in my other notes of what this is doing, everybody's credentials and what this person, that's wonderful. And a lot of other forces have those credentials, but the problems still happen because it takes one single second for something of error to happen. So, so my concerns is I think that we need a, a very transparent, opened up review board process. Our minority recruiting, one of the things, the reason I got involved in this town is I felt like it did not reflect the community in which it serves, from the schools, from the police force all the way down. And I thought that that needed to change and that's why I, I am involved the way that I am. So I said from day one, this needs to change at, under new business. Everyone says we are, and I said, what are we doing? I, I feel that we, we can do better in this town. Looking at, I have concerns from, from the state and federal levels, looking at the qualified immunity. You know, and I don't know if some people know about it or not, but that, that doctrine that was enacted to protect police officers in certain situations, you know, it's not something maybe you probably change to the town level, but it's something that needs to be looked at. That's when you start to create an environment like that, then you, you can have lines and situations where incidents can happen. Once again, maybe nothing's happened here. We've had cams for how long? Maybe nothing's documented, but we don't truly know, sitting here this day, that nothing is happening, has not crossed any lines. We might not know about it. And, and so I, I like to.
I think it's important, but we do have the body cameras.
We, we do now. Once again, as I was speaking, we, we have body cams now, but we didn't before. So with that, I think we need a more transparent, open dialogue. I, I do not feel comfortable with, you know, with not having a, a structure of government like that where it's not just our HR person who does the hiring of all these employees. I think there should be a much broader, open, transparent process. I think there needs to be more community engagement, civilian oversight, more community policing, working out some different dialogue in the community. As a minority in this community right now, I can't say that I don't know a few that would not be afraid, never been in trouble and pulled over and feels concerns right now with what's going on in the climate. And being pulled over into that capacity, they look suspicious just because you pulled them over and they're concerned with, they, they haven't done anything. And so I just hope that our police department is going to be looking at that as an, as an avenue, like understanding that, yeah, pulling over a black guy or a black family right now, they've done nothing, maybe their taillights out. They, they are nervous and how are we approaching that? And not thinking, well, what are you doing? You look a little like you're up to something, you know? Yeah, they look nervous, you know? So I feel this is just a starting point, but I think we have a lot of work to do. I think our diversity in this town needs improvement, improvement. I think John, you know, did strike on some of those issues. But how to go from parenting our children and not saying, when my son's getting his license, it should be a happy occasion and not telling him how to be arrested? So that he's not wrongly accused of being another minority or mistaken for somebody else? How do we get to beyond that? How do we address those social inequalities in this town? Those are the things that I want to talk about. And that, you know, this was now just the background, this was the credentialing and what we have. But let's open it up further and really get into what are we going to do as a community to address the social inequality that African American and people of color in this town feel? And how we are going to make them feel that in this town, that's not going to happen? And, and when you're, when you're having the dialogue in the interaction with people of color, what, 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 what do, what are we feeling? Where's that platform where you invite people and say, this is how I feel? You know, I think we need to move it a little bit further. The DEI committee, couple of times that they proposed were some daytimes, one evening time. I think, I think for it to be fully have everyone involvement, we have to have non-working hours. So I was in more support of the 6:00 PM because, you know, if you do it at three, not everybody can attend and it boxes out a lot of working people. But I, I would like to see more about what we're doing to help the diverse community in this town, to make them feel safe, to make them feel heard. That's, that's the concerns that that community is crying out for. Just because it hasn't happened here or that we know of hasn't happened here because we have body cameras now. It's, it's, it's really important that we, we set the precedent to be as open and transparent as possible. And I have concerns as, as a personal with the qualified immunity. I think it's important, but I think to some extent, I think that creates another whole problem in some, in some ways. So what I, what I, my question is, is what, what is, to Chief Fissar, what is your plan in this town to work on the ethnicity and inequality of minorities in this community?
I think that's a global question. I think that, that certainly the step in the right direction is what the town manager proposed with the DEI committee. That's, you know, I don't think that overnight things will, things will be resolved. But I do think that incremental steps, you gotta start somewhere. I think that's a great proposal and I, I certainly appreciate your comments and I, I thank you for that.
I, I have concerns that the DEI committee is not going to be enough, in my personal opinion. I think it needs to be a little bit more structured with like the proper key players in that. I mean, having a bunch of discussions is not necessarily gonna, you know, bring the situation to light. I think, you know, coming up with some other plans, like, you know, the civilian oversight and having, you know, some type of dialogue open where minorities can have the option to address their concerns and feel comfortable addressing their concerns in, in, in a manner that is in a open platform with discussion and going into the larger minority communities and having the ability to have the relationships and build those types of trust relationships.
Definitely advocate of building trust and, and, and relationships, absolutely.
So that's community policing and, and definitely looking to hire more minority staff. I mean, our, our department, I, I know a city has several and they are a smaller municipality, but yet per number, they have more. So I think it's that, that's another important piece. And looking at our youth officer structure, not just from a minority standpoint, but also from a gender standpoint, you know, needing a female rotating into the high school as well. You know, maybe it shouldn't be just one youth officer, maybe it should be an array of, you know, of people going in so that, that relationship can be developed, not just with one. And that, that's another thought. But anyway, I'm open to getting involved, but I think there is a definitely some talk that we need to further commit. And I think a committee should be formed, that's the angle I would like to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we are at nine 20. Counselor Heat is waiting to ask his first question. Counselor Heat.
Sorry, disabled the video instead of unmuting myself. I'll, I'll make it quick. I want to thank Chief Fissar for coming out tonight and, and giving us, you know, a presentation like this. And also I want to commend the, the police officers that were at the protest march. They were phenomenal, very good positive interaction with, with the protesters. And, you know, you can see on TV comparisons to how other departments have, have behaved. You know, I was quite pleased, so thank you. Obviously though, things are going to have to change and, and I don't have, most of what I would have been interested in asking has already been asked, so I'll just throw this one over to John Burke and ask what, given that these are going to be ongoing conversations and, and changes are going to come down the pipe, does he have any, any ideas of what might roll out in addition to DEI or, or what might go beyond that? Thank you.
Well, DEI is coming up with lots of good ideas on a variety of things. I think we need to see where they're going, but also the expert we have coming to do the training in the fall, which will be seven, seven hour trainings, eight of them for diversity and to open communications. You know, police will be involved, all our employees will be involved, the public. We'll have many hundreds of people involved in this process, but they're experts also on hiring practices, how to increase diversity. I think we're going to learn a plethora of things when we go through that process, which is not far off. Hopefully we'll be doing it sooner rather than later, depending on COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Burt. Counselor Baumgartner, you were, you are on your second question. Is it something that you wanted to go for right now?
Yeah, it's more of a statement and just like to align my remarks with Counselor Bordelon. While I don't have any children, you know, I am a man of color and, you know, my, my experiences in town have been largely positive with the police department. Spoke with the day about just some experiences I've had with my younger brother who's on the autism spectrum. And the chief had talked about how the police department is now doing roles that they're not, they were not asked of, of doing, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And, and one of those is obviously, you know, working with, very closely with, with children with special needs and de-escalating. Can be a very intense situation where there can be physical altercations and, you know, the need for understanding officers, you know, who aren't put to, you know, jump the gun and, and use excessive use of force on, on someone who, who can't coherently put together his own thoughts, articulate his own thoughts to, to others. So, you know, we're, we're very fortunate here in Groton to have officers who, you know, aren't trained in that. And I just think that's, that's so important. So, but I, again, I, I think it's so very, very important that in the future, our town looks to establish a civilian review board that is independent from politics and that can independently investigate complaints against the police department. And I, I think that's quickly becoming, you know, best practice. I know the state is, the state legislature will be looking at a series of reforms relating to that, among other things. But I, I do think Groton, you know, would behoove Groton to be ahead of the curve, as the chief has said, and being one of the first departments to institute body cameras that we, you know, really lead that charge and spearheading best practices. So, you know, I, I'm happy that our, our new policies, you know, do reflect that, that there are contemporary policing practices. But I, I do think that it's very important to engage the public on these policies as well, outside of, of our, you know, our, our council. So my, I guess my last question to you, Chief, would be what efforts are, are, are being done by the police department to share these policies with, you know, constituency groups, you know, say that. you know, um, constituency groups, um, you know, say the the Black Student Union at Fitch, just different um, groups or clergy that could, you know, have input on on these um, policies before they actually go into to effect.
Sure, you know, we have, we have engaged with some other groups. In fact, um, the policies that you got, most of which can are are publicly available on the post website, albeit they're not, they're not the final version that we use. So they are publicly available. I know that the uh, the town manager spoken about getting this stuff on um, on the town's website. I know there's efforts underway right now to revamp that. I I think that's a good procedure. There's other departments in the state um, that do that, not many, but some do. Uh, I think that we will get there. Um, not all of this is uniquely police problem, by the way. It's there's other agencies in the town that that would have to be involved in that. Uh, you know, we do, we do socialize these with other entities. Um, you know, some of the stuff that goes towards best practices and policing, uh, you know, really, that that that's why I look to a guy like Eric to say, hey, are we on the right track? Is this the way it needs to go? Um, I think what we're going to see in the future uh, is that we're going to see more of those prescribed policies on a statewide basis. Um, and a lot of the policies that are unique to an agency um, will be left to those agencies. But a lot of the more, certainly the high liability, the ones that we've already seen come out, the pursuits policies, the use of force policy, the complaint policy, the body worn camera policy. Those are all state policies that, when I say state, I mean, they're 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 promulgated by the Police Officer Standards and Training Council. Um, and that we have to adopt them. I think that's, I think that is the best practices. Those are publicly available. Those are things that the public is should be and is in many cases aware of. You know, moving in that direction, I think is good because we, you know, I I'll kind of leave you with this. One of those Pelean principles, if you read that, if you have time, the police are the public and the public are the police. We're intertwined. That's that's the important underlying premise in that uh, in every community. So so I do think that the policies that that you're speaking about, certainly having those available, I I mean, I endorse that. Um, we're not there yet. We're still in the midst of going forward and moving this process along. And there are other stakeholders involved um, in the department and outside the department that we work with regularly to make sure we achieve that. So um, I think policing is getting better. I do appreciate the concerns that you brought up. Um, I I I hope that answers your question. I know Mayor Granitowski is has other agenda items. I don't know if you want me to expand upon that more. But while I have, while I have the floor, just to add add this, I do appreciate this dialogue. But more importantly, and I say this on behalf of our officers and dispatchers and animal control office, we appreciate the support of this council. We appreciate you caring about our agency to ask questions. But really, our officers, our people have a tough job. It is a very tough time in law enforcement. And and we are fortunate, I feel you are fortunate to have the officers that that I'm fortunate to have stewardship over. Uh, we have a great agency. We have exceptionally committed officers and dispatchers. You should know that and they appreciate your support and now so more so than ever. Um, while there's a lot of people indicting law enforcement, you know, to to know that you guys support these officers and you show it through your words and action, we appreciate that and I want to thank you for that.
And thank you, Chief. And um, you you had mentioned that uh, you know, but body cams is perhaps an unpopular decision and I couldn't disagree with you more. I know just, you know, speaking personally, I'm very glad.
I meant that in the context of within our officers because, you know, at the time, uh, having that, it was it was new and it was a lot of questions. And and I think now we've, I agree with you, we've changed, we've turned that corner, our officers embrace it and understand the value of having them for a lot of different reasons and and uh, it speaks to that transparency thing that I've talked about before today.
I think you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Chief, for coming out this evening. Thank you, Mr. Dagel. And again, this is just the start of the ongoing conversation. I know we all have valid concerns, but we do thank you for your service to the town. We thank your team as well. Um, and I concur with the former counselor who noted um, the interaction between the town police and um, the protesters of the peaceful protest. And it was, it was heartening to see that there was um, good relationship. Um, and it's a good foundation. Um, and we look forward to making things even better. So thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dagel. All right, it is nine twenty-nine. We are coming back in five minutes and we're gonna plow through everything else. So.
Thank you, Ellen.
Five minutes, guys. I think Ms. Duggan might stick around. It is nine thirty-five and we are on to item five D, which is twenty twenty-four thirty-one, retiree colas. There is no motion made in advance on this. Um, it is.
I, you're a good friend, Paul. I appreciate it.
I'm sorry. Are we, are we good? Um, so we have no motion prepared in advances. This is a policy decision that the council needs to make. This is on page forty-nine in your packet. Um, and I'm not sure if Mr. Burke or um, or Ms. Duggan wanted to address the recommendation that was made by staff regarding the colas.
Eileen will be, Eileen will be addressing.
Thank you.
So I think as some of you, uh, may know, or this may be new to some as well, um, every couple of years, the opportunity exists for um, an increase in retiree cost of living adjustments. Um, back in two thousand eighteen, the council awarded a two percent cost of living adjustment and uh, effective uh, July one, two thousand eighteen. Um, per all their contracts and the non-union agreements. Every two years, the opportunity comes up again to um, discuss these uh, potential colas. This has happened, but we got off track, I will admit slightly. Um, there was discussion early on, then we had to get an actuarial cost out. By the time this happened and the time the opportunity then came for really earnest discussion um, about these colas or the potential colas. We were hit with the COVID issue. So we went back and forth with the various unions just to simply ask them for their input. What was it that they were looking for? Um, and we then evaluated that against what uh, the town got as an actuarial cost out. And in this instance, the the various unions, per the information that we've provided, um, sought some different amounts of colas, whether it was uh, two percent, one was a six percent. Um, and when we looked at it, we looked into just an average of two percent. And if the council were to award a two percent cola for retirees across the board, um, it would equate to about a seventy-eight thousand dollar increase per year um, for the next twenty years uh, with regard to its contributions for retirement. Um, so based on uh, that frankly, that amount, the fact that there had been colas issued recently uh, the past two years. Um, looking at the adjustments in the the town's um, uh, retirement interest, return of interest rate from seven point five to seven point two five, which then increased actually how much the town will be paying in the future, et cetera. It was our recommendation that it simply just was not the the time um, right now to provide a cola. Um, and you know, and and the council can have a benchmark uh, in trying to do some analysis that again, a two percent across the board would be roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars a year and it just goes down or up proportionally. So one percent, you know, would be half of that. Um, so that that's how we came to that that conclusion.
Thank you very much. Um, do any counselors have questions about this? So right now, there is no motion because it was town staff's recommendation to not um, not go for a cola this year, given the reasons that um, Attorney Duggan just stated. Counselor Obray.
Um, when I first came on the council, I got, I was very um, interested in what was being done for our retirees, have been since. So I think we should have a little dialogue at our, at our next meeting. I think we should have an opportunity to read what's here. And I I fully understand the uh, the hardships we're going to be running into in this town and that we already are. But they are also. So um, I would like to have further dialogue and maybe we could come up with something that's the middle of the road so that maybe everybody can handle it. Thank you.
Counselor Heed had his hand up.
I'll I'll just put myself on record as as supporting the staff recommendation with with the way the stock market has been trading down. I don't think now is a a good time fiscally to uh, take money out of out of our um, whatever it is, and increase the the, take it out of the pension investments. Thank you.
So we have um, one in concurrence with the staff recommendation, another counselor would like to revisit this at another meeting. Counselor Franco.
I know that it had been fifteen years or approximately when we took this up last time, that they had not received increases. I also think um, on the most part, I think it's a, it's a, it's a bad year and we don't know what's going to be coming down the pipe. Although I will just reiterate what happened at our last council meeting where we had decided to go in and use some fund balance to purchase property in a time that we're all so worried about, you know, our financial situation. Um, so I would like to say that one of my first things would be, I personally think, is that we should take care of our people and the people that are giving um, their time to our community and working for us and make sure that they're being taken care of properly. And this should be reviewed on a routine basis. And there should be more discussion about this. And so when um, people decide that it's good to use fund balance for certain things, that maybe they should be considering other things that should be coming down the plate. Um, such as cola increases and that this actually affects people in their livelihood and trying to survive on fixed incomes. Um, which is extremely tough when the price of everything has been going up. And even with the COVID, the price of food has drastically gone up. So although I think this is a bad year, um, I would just like to re say that this should be reviewed routinely. And can I ask another thing? Um, Attorney Duggan, is this isn't all of our um, unions though, right?
It it actually is. It's all the unions and the actuarial cost out included non-union employees as well. Um, so this per per the agreements, um, it does, it is supposed to happen every two years. Um, I can offer maybe two other thoughts. One, you know, concerns with um, the difficult economic circumstances. Just a reminder that we do still have some contracts that are open and that have been delayed due to the COVID issues and inability to to meet and and negotiate. And two, um, one of the unions actually, um, two of the unions actually modified their proposals after we indicated, you know, we gave them what our position was. Um, one of them modified them down significantly, down down to from like six percent to two percent. Another one modified them from saying two percent to to zero at the time being with the request or suggestion that the council consider revisiting this issue next year instead of two years from now. Um, and that's certainly something, I think, i- if the council had that sort of thought about where are things going, how are things going? Um, I'd be hard pressed to think that the that the unions would contest it if we suggested to them, oh, we can give you, you know, you can take a zero now or we'll take a look at it again in another year. I don't know that the circumstances honestly will be different, who does? But if that's a concern, I think, uh, Counselor Obray, that, you know, you expressed about, you know, what are we doing for folks? Um, that may be one way to to address it.
Thank you. I would um, I personally would like this to come back to see us again next year and not wait the full two years. Um, so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Um, I just want to get a sense of something before, um, I see Counselor Bordelon is raising her hand. Um, we have a chart that was presented to us and it outlined for us the requests. Um, and the recommendation and the calculation was done for and across the board, two percent, correct? So um, perhaps taking Counselor Obray's lead, we could say um, can we look at this maybe next month or in Can we look at this maybe next month or in two months? And staff could come back to us with maybe a one percent or a half percent or some kind of, some kind of increase. Just to adjust, because I do understand people are on fixed incomes and it is important that we do take care of people. Would that be, is that objectionable to anyone? That we revisit this in a month or two with perhaps lower, lower numbers? That wouldn't be such a hit to the pension liability. Does anyone object to that? Counselors Zepary objects? Counselor Bordelon had her hand up, but Counselor Bordelon is, can he go ahead at this point, or do you want to take your turn first?
It'll take.
I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds.
I think he's yielding to you, Counselor Bordelon, since you had your.
He can, he can go. I don't want a time restraint. Go ahead.
The only reason I object to it is the, the, the idea that we're going to come back with a request to. To. Start to develop a one percent increase or a lower compromise measure. Is a suggestion that the council wants to make a compromise offer, and I'm not sure that's entirely the picture. So I'd like not to suggest that at this time. So that's why I raised my hand.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Counselor Bordelon?
No, I, I agree that we, we should take a look at this. At least bring it back up for discussion and then if we wanted to postpone it for a year or a few months, but I'm in support of seeing this again in a couple of months and. Seeing some other numbers proposed and at least do our due diligence before shooting it completely down.
Counselor He has his hand up again. Did anyone who hasn't spoken yet wish to speak before I go back to him for a second time? Counselor He, you have the floor.
Not really opposed to bringing it back in a couple of months, but I, I do want to just point out that this. These pension funds are invested in the stock market and other tools of investment, bonds, anything like that. So if that is going down, then we have to be careful because it ends up being an outsized. You know, cut to the future, you know, it creates the liabilities, makes it go up a little bit higher. I'm not saying that right, but you know what I mean.
So. I think, I think you're saying too, then if we come back with this in a couple of months, we'll probably need to get an updated. Estimate from the actuaries. Is that?
Counselor He, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, I see.
Not, not exactly. I'm, I'm just saying if, if the stock market is going to be down for a year during the coronavirus epidemic. Then a year from now would be the time to bring it back, not a couple of months from now. Just, I'll, I'll go with Counselor Zepary on this one and, and say that I would oppose bringing it back in a month or two because the stock market isn't going to be any better.
Okay, so, so understood. So then. Let's, let's see then, is there consensus to? Well, I'm just going to go this way. There's no motion on the floor, and so unless there's a motion on the floor, we're going to move on.
Any motion?
So there is no. Excuse me?
Do we need to make a motion?
If you want to do something, yes, you need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to bring back this topic in two months' time.
We, we don't really need to, I don't think we need a motion for that. Mr. Burt, go ahead.
I just want to say, sometimes actually, if we're looking for an updated actuarial, sometimes it can take two, three months. So I'll bring back once we have it.
Okay, and I don't, I don't think that requires a motion at this, we can just. Wow, that was loud. We'll revisit at that point. So then, is there consensus to have? The manager come back with. The new actuarial.
You want a half percent and one percent? Is that what you're looking for?
Is that, would that be good? Half percent, one percent, and then we already have the two percent, but that, of course, that's going to be based on what the market's doing right now, so it may not be valid.
So, do you want it updated or not?
Is that the question? So then, are we agreed that we would like that updated in a couple of months as soon as he can run the one half, one and one-half percent? Yes?
No.
No?
Counselor Parker said.
Okay, I see Counselor Parker, Counselor Zepary and Counselor He have said no, unless there are other voices, we have consensus. Go ahead.
I want to go forward if, if we can get the additional information and then review it.
All right, so it looks like we have consensus that the manager will go ahead with this and we'll come back to this. We'll revisit in a few months with the other percentages. Thank you very much. Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly.
Oh, are you, Ellen, are you so that you can accept the, the proposal that the, that one group had that they would just go forward the way they are?
One group suggested that, given the difficult circumstances that everybody was facing, that now wasn't the time to actually. Seek an increase for the retirees and that it would forego that provided that the town would agree to take it up again next year in an off-cycle manner.
My recommendation would be to treat them all equally, however.
Okay. All right.
Hi, thank you very much. We are on to item five E, two thousand twenty-three, three, five, two, knowing school property disposition discussion. All right, this was page sixty in your book, or not in your book, in your packet, and. How to start? I think we should start by. Seeing if there's consensus to sell the property. Let's start with that, because it seems like there are two very clear-cut. Paths to go down. So is there consensus among the council to sell the property? So I'm seeing one.
No, that's not what I'm doing.
Two hands.
That's not what I'm doing.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Aubrey also had her hand up.
I have something I'd like to say when you're, when you're, it's appropriate.
Okay, well, I wanted to start with, with that basic question because that is the starting point we need to begin with. We can, we can keep the property and decide what we're going to do with it, or we can choose to sell the property. Okay? So I, I understand, Counselor Aubrey. I will get there in a second. But I, I think this is a good, good place to begin the discussion. And then once we either rule in or rule out something, then we can move on to specifics. Counselor Aubrey, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't think we can, and let me explain what my feeling is because I've, certainly it's been on the mind of everybody. But you know, we have a procedure in Groton that we've been working with for the disposal of properties that Groton has. And we have never done that with this property. And I have to ask myself why? I mean, we have on every other property and upcoming properties asked if anybody had a proposal. Other than the people that want a garden, we understand what they want. But we did not put it out as we have the other property. And I think without doing that, we couldn't possibly decide if we wanted to sell it or not. We, we've left out a step that needs to be done. And, and that, that's how I feel now. If nobody else feels that way, fine. But I don't think you have what you need to say, oh yeah, let's sell it. You know, we need to know. Well, it's kind of, you know, the devil in the, the detail because. We'd be saying to people, we're trying to decide if we want to sell this, so could you tell us what you think you'd like to do there? So I mean, it's kind of backwards at this point. But I think it's information that we really need in order to be able to make this decision on to, to sell or to just say. We're going to do this. So that, that's my feeling tonight. I hope some people understand what I'm trying to say.
I do. I'm going to, I'm going to go to Counselor Franco next because she had her hand up and then I will speak. And then we have several other counselors whose hands popped up as you were talking.
I also don't think it's cutting dry as to whether we should just sell or keep, because there might be a situation where some counselors may think. I would like it. Option A. And if option A isn't available, I would like to option B, which may be, option B might be sell. So I don't think it's very cut and dry between the two. So if maybe option A doesn't pass, I may go to a, a different situation that may include selling. So there are. I don't think it's as cut and clear as just sell or not. And I also agree that I think. We heard some stakeholders. Speak that were interested in that property, but. I don't think we've heard, there were other, there might be others that are missing. And. So I, I would agree that I don't think we have all of the information necessary either.
Counselor Zepary and then he.
I, you know, we've talked about this a number of times in the past. And we've had a whole lot of communication from the citizens of Groton. And I think the emails that we got are running some overwhelmingly, and majority of them. Are in favor of preserving this property as open space. We've talked to, we even had Kurt Frost. With us one night and he talked about the options for developing an, an arboretum or park. And the, the different way the, the property can be preserved. But I, I am impressed with the vast majority of people, not only from Knoway, but from other parts of the town. Who are in favor of preserving this as open space, and that means not selling it to someone to develop. When we, when, when we turn it over for exploration of what people want to do in developing it. It's because we have an intention to sell it. We ask for requests for proposals. We don't ask for requests for proposals when we really want to preserve the land for open space for the public to use. We ask for requests for proposals when we're looking for the best deal as to what can be developed on the property. What the people have told us over and over again is they don't want anything developed on that property. They want an open space. They want, they want a park. Or they just want something green there. And I'm very impressed by the people that told us about the tranquility of walking through the place. Of taking the grandchildren through it. I, I, I just, you know, I don't know how we can. Can turn our backs on what the people are telling us.
I, I want to get my two cents in, but I'm going to go Counselor He and Baumgartner next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just quickly, I respectfully disagree with Counselor Aubrey. This process. Well, basically, as, as you all know, the two of us helped the town staff review proposals that come before them for, for school properties and other town properties as needed. But before that process begins, the town staff figures out what are the optimal uses for this property? How does it build the community better? Does it add to the tax base, or does it create some other kind of, does it generate some other kind of benefit? And the town staff then come and make recommendations to us, and they have recommended not to sell the property and that's. I, I was under the impression that this wasn't even a question anymore because. It's not something that any, I don't think anybody on the council is seriously considered, so. Don't know why we're being asked to sell the property. That would be unusual based on the process that we have in place.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Lights off, Andre. There you go.
Thank you. Actually, I, I was saying, I, I agree with you, Counselor Zepary. And, you know, we, we've been deliberating on this issue since I. As council asked me to, to fill a vacancy. I mean, we've. Hashed it and rehashed it and we talked about it sort of ad nauseam and I, I think. So many residents who would like to put this issue to rest and find some kind of resolution that is. That appeases the interests of, of so many in, in town. Because it is a, a, a parcel that is undeveloped, that could be developed. But it is also a parcel of land that is very much enjoyed by so many citizens, not just in Knoway, but throughout the town. That should be protected in perpetuity. So, you know, I, I have a question for the town attorney, Ms. Duggan. I, I understand that, you know, there are many folks who would like to see it as a park or maintained as in the status quo, but. What remedies can be? Can be town taped to ensure that that land is truly protected in perpetuity? And can a conservation easement be applied to, to that property to ensure that that property could be protected for the long haul?
Go ahead, Attorney Duggan.
Sorry. Oh, yeah, I, I do believe that a convers- conversation, it's late, I guess, conservation easement could be applied, but it would have to go through a, a process, a land conveyance process. Just like you would with, with other lands, so it's not something you simply just do, you would just have to go through a process. And then I think that the council would have to be, you know, very, very certain as to what it wanted to see have happen with this property. Because once the, the restrictions or specific uses are put on it and there's a conservation easement put on it. Then the only way you're going to change that is through some consent from the Attorney General's office, just like we had to go through with the merit property. So you, you certainly can lock it in. It's just something that we want to be very certain what it is. You're locking in because, you know, the town's going to live with that after it.
And, and, and would that process be different than the town setting, say, a recreation easement as well? In order to be kind of recreation features?
Right. So that, I believe that, that, that would really all be part of it, whether it was, you know, passive use or active use, however it's all spelled out. I mean, really, the conservation easement is saying it's here for the public use, and then you're talking about what those uses might be.
And would, would that designation be different than a. Applying a open space designation to the, to the property?
You know, I, I'm not sure, honestly, as you say that, that I truly know the difference between those two. But I would say that if the question is, what do you have to do to ensure that there cannot be change afterwards to that easement or to those restrict, or to those restrictions? You would need to go through the, you know, easement process.
So, and thank you for that. And to the entire council, I am supportive of placing. A compensation easement on the property to ensure that it is protected and that, you know, the town or future councils can't go ahead and say, hey, we want to revisit what the, this past council has deliberated on so many times. So to, to ensure that, for, to make a decision with this property that it is mine being and, and it can't be messed with by other folks in, in future councils, so. That I, I, I'm there.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I do think this is an appropriate time to make that first decision. If the council, if a majority of the council is, is of the consensus that they would like to dispose of the property as a sale. Now's the time to decide that. If the council is of the mind that we don't want to ever sell it, now's the time to decide that. If a majority, say, we do want to sell this property in some manner. Then we go to the process that has worked so well for us with Groton Heights and with. You know, what, what we're working on now with the other school properties. But we can't even go to that process of an RFP if we don't know if the majority of the council wants to sell it or go down that route. So I'm simply trying to get to the place where counselors individually will say, yes, we want to consider that RFP process. Or no, we want it preserved as green space. Okay? And so far, I think I'm hearing that there are four of us who would like to see it preserved as green space. And then the devil is in the details with that. So, you know. It is the appropriate time to be asking those questions. So Counselor Melendez has his hand up.
Yes, I would also like to. Be on the side of preserving it as a green space. I've read. Essentially every letter that has been written and their. Majority all on that side, so I think. The residents have spoken. So yeah, definitely, I, I would not be in favor of, of a sale.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So Councilor Heath has asked that, and I asked this at the beginning of the meeting, please use your hand icon because that's easiest to see when we're doing this. So the other councillors who haven't spoken yet, did you want to chime in? So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That would be Councilor Parker and Councilor Bordelone. You haven't had-
Yeah, just to heads up my hand icon, I normally use the raise hand button, but I'm on a different device as mine failed, so I have to use my hand only right now.
If I don't, just keep it up there and I'll see it eventually.
I was using the hand icon before, but-
Like Councilor O'Bree just did.
Can I say something?
Well, I yielded the floor to Councilor Bordelone. I don't know if she wishes to speak.
Okay.
Oh, I'm going. I know, I just think it's important to have at least an RFP to see what other options are out there before making a decision. I mean, I think it does, I mean, I could say I want to preserve it, but I also think due diligence across everybody is to also have that available and that to review. Thank you.
The only other councillor who hasn't spoken is Councilor Parker. Did you wish to chime in at this point, Councilor Parker?
I believe there, the Noink zoning has said-
You're coming-
-to all of us can be used on that property. Am I correct?
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, try it again because it was dragged out, please.
I don't know why I'm on-
We can hear you fine now. Whatever you're doing right now is working.
Did they provide us information about the property? What can be used for that property? I give-
Yeah, yes, that every, what the uses were included in that report that staff gave to the council.
All right. I apologize, I was absent from the meeting. I only skimmed through the notes, so forgive me. It seems the majority wants to conserve the land, but if we conserve the land, I want strict, and I mean very strict stipulations with this land, if that's the route we're going. I don't agree with leasing the land for a number of years because some of us will not be arounders. And two, I think, I don't think we've had a lease that goes that long. I would be successful, you can't hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Strong stipulations about the land and not a long-term lease if we do it this way, if that's one of the options. And I want us to make sure that we have the oversight over it as a town and that make sure that all, as they said in their letters, that all's welcome. I don't want us to go over there and find out this issue and have things happen and find out we shouldn't be over there. I don't want any issues like that. Even though they said everything's open to all, I don't want any issues. So I want strong stipulations.
Okay. So we have consensus then. The consensus of the council is not to sell the property. So then where we go next is what we want to do with it. Councilor Parker has stated very clearly her view, and I'm just going to restate Councilor Parker in case I missed anything because you were fading in and out. Strict stipulations, no long-term lease, town oversight and verification that people from all over Groton would be welcome at the park at all times. Okay, so, there are no hands.
I don't have a, I don't have a-
Go for it.
I'm sorry, I don't have a hand thing either.
Okay, go.
I just want, I don't know how to say this without really causing problems, but we are setting a precedent at this time. And I want you to stop and think just a little bit about the repercussions that may come out of this decision that you're making. This is not the only property that we're talking about. But when we make this decision, we're going to affect others that are in the process. And I don't think you're thinking about that. And I can't say any more than that. You should all pretty much be on the same wave with me at this point. If you're not, I don't know what to say. You know, this is not the only property we've been talking about. And it's not the only property that we've been hearing from the community about. So I want you to be cautious. We got a real situation on our hands.
Thank you, Councilor O'Bree. Councilor Parker said she agrees with Councilor O'Bree that we need to be cautious. All right, so again, we have consensus of the council to move forward with some kind of preservation of the property. And I'm not sure if anyone wants to float a suggestion at this point. We are not debating selling or not selling. We are on to what the consensus of the council is. So Councilor Franco.
I don't have a raise my hand either. So I would just like to reiterate some history here is that this has come to the council like 21 times. This is not an easy decision to make. And the reason being is the zoning there has very strict stipulations on what can be there. As Councilor O'Bree had just stated, you're setting a precedent for all other properties. And we have heard from other citizens about those properties as well in our town and wanting to know why their empty school can't become a park as well. So I just want you to understand by just simply saying, are we selling? Are we doing this? And you're dropping the line right then and there without- I just don't understand, like, we got to this position because the last council said it this way and this is what we're dealing with now. I don't recall all the other schools basically, you know, I don't remember anybody coming and saying, this is a beautiful park we can build here at the William Sealy School and here's all the, what it could look like and here's what the neighborhood could do. I don't remember hearing all those either. So I just want you to know, when everybody's saying that this is the right land and the right place to do it, the other parts of our town are going to say the exact same thing. And I've already heard it from people, if they're going to get it, I want it at my school too. So we have started process on, like, Sealy. And those neighbors are asking for the same thing. So what are your answers to them going to be? So these are the questions, like, I just don't know. I personally, I'm asking for Noink property to be looked at for sports fields as a town use item, not to sit in perpetuity forever, but because this is going to fit a town need. And I also think, like, when you look at Quadchester, there's something there that will fit a town need. So if something's going to be done, I don't think it should be done forever, but it should be done with something, as in my personal opinion, as a town need. And that's where I stand. If you're going to set this up or it's going to be like this forever, you just better plan to be able to answer to your constituents on the other side of town, who don't have parks in their area either, who want these things, and how you're going to answer to them as well. So I just want to make that clear. And when it comes to the sports fields, the task force, like, our last meeting when I brought it up, I was basically tried to be shot down for even bringing up the item. But we have a task force looking at sports fields in our community and what the needs are. And they have a thing of reviewing everything that they need and where they could go. So I would like to wait and find out what our needs are in sports fields in our community and what may fit in that property. So that's where I stand. And thank you.
Thank you. So again, we have consensus of the council to discuss what we'd like to do as far as preservation of the property. Councilor Heath?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that the town staff is working off the plan of conservation development. They analyze the property, they figure out what's the best use for this property, how it'll benefit the town. It's true that that's what they do and they come to us and they make suggestions. And their suggestions included primarily open space. We got a good proposal from Groton Housing Authority that would have accomplished several things, given them extra finances to spend across town. But as Councilor Franco mentioned, you have to jump through an additional hoop of doing the zoning, the local zoning. So we know that there's that challenge. But not every school property is going to be the same use. I suspect color is going to be sports fields. And again, I have to agree with Councilor Franco, we can't necessarily tie the hands of a generation 50 years from now, but we can make sure that, like, at least in the interim, that we set this, whatever we end up doing gets set up in the proper kind of way to make sure that there aren't, there's not a revolving door of groups coming in and trying to manage things at different levels of interest. And, you know, whatever we end up doing should have a vigorous oversight and solid, strong people to sort of set the tone for where to go from there. And obviously, we need to consider, we as a council need to consider how this would impact our grant lists or, if not the grant lists, and how it affects the expenses that the towns would, that the town taxpayer would have to pay for. So I would be in favor of a lower cost option that keeps the space open but can still be used by the entire community. If that means transferring to the fire district in order to ensure any expenses that come up belong to the fire district, that may be pushing the cost of maintenance down to the fire district. So I'm not totally convinced that's the right way to go. It might be, I would support it if that's what the majority says. But yeah, so that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Heath. Councilor Zepary has a hand up.
First of all, I'd like to call people's attention to waving, raising your hand. If you move the cursor to the bottom of your screen, some icons will pop up. One of them in my screen is to the far, is in the center of the screen, but the left of four, it says participants. If you click on participants, there will be a menu that comes up. And one of the places you can click on is raise your hand. And then you click on that and your hand goes up and Patrice can see it. You don't have to wave around.
With all due respect, I logged off and came back on. I was on a laptop and I do raise my hand all the time. I have the icon that pops up in my screen, but I'm on a different device. And I do not, I do not have the option.
Councilor Bordelone, Councilor Zepary has the floor. Perry, did you want to make a statement there?
The other thing I would like to say is that we are the council. We are elected to make decisions for what is best for the town in certain circumstances. But there isn't one solution that's suitable for every property that we have. We should not feel that if we develop a park in the Noink school property that we are bound to develop a park in every other school property that's being returned to the town for development. We should make our decisions based upon what we think is best for the whole town. If we think that preserving this as open space is best for the whole town, we should vote our consciences. But if we think that, and if we think that another property is not best for the whole town to be preserved as open space, we should vote our consciences there. We are nine people with nine different opinions most of the time. But we come together and we make votes on issues and none of us is terribly happy with everyone else. But we have to come to the conclusion that we can, it's our job to make a decision and it's our job to make a decision together. So I don't want to be told or, I'm just opposed to the notion that because we make a park in Noink, we have to make a park in every other school of the town.
Okay, I have Councilor Bordelone, Baumgardner and Melendez. And please, I urge you, we have come to consensus that we are going to move forward with preserving this property. So please try to keep the conversation focused on that option. Thank you.
Well, I would like to start off first, after I was schooled on how to use Zoom, I did switch computers and on this type of tablet, there's not a raise hand option or else I would raise my hand. On the other computer, you could, but there's no, under participants, it does not pop up. So, but thank you for the clarification on that. I just want to say that I support, like, an option if, as long as it has sports fields involved in it. I think that there's a need in this town and we need to have field usage as top priority. So how we do that and what that's going to look like, I don't know. As much as we want to preserve open space, open space is also sports fields and usage where people can utilize that and have places to have access to proper fields, which we have a huge decline in this town. Thank you.
We are at Councilor Baumgardner and then Melendez.
Anybody, Madam Mayor. The council recalls, there are a series of presentations for, you know, the reuse of the property. And one of those proposals was a synthesis of several ideas. You know, there are folks on this council, including myself, who are calling for some form of an arboretum to install trees that can, as you know, when we put the middle school property, built the middle school on the Merit School, I'm sorry, the Merit property, we displaced a ton of trees. And so by establishing some form of an arboretum, you can start the process of installing trees that were, that had been taken, that the town displaced during that construction. So also included in that plan was a, it was to establish a, I'm sorry, I am super tired, folks, a youth field that could be used by soccer and as well as lacrosse. And, you know, there are folks on this council also calling for establishing sports fields. And I know there is a demand for all different types. You know, yes, large regulation, fields that can be used by the high school age, but also I think there is a demand for youth. So I think it would behoove the council to support an option that is reflective of everyone's viewpoints. And, you know, my goal is to obviously protect this open space because, one, it is enjoyed by so many citizens, but I think it does play a big role in sequestering, you know, carbon in our town and, you know, making our community more resilient. And so I think that's a key parcel in making that happen. But I also know that, you know, we do, we must offer recreational opportunities to, you know, our families. And I think with that is sports. And so, you know, again, this is a plan that had initially been drafted by the initial task for, the school gardens task force. And this was, Brian Kent went ahead and revamped that initial design to reflect some of the interests of this current council. So with that, I will make a motion to endorse that plan as a vision for the future. And I'll welcome the due second.
So could you restate this? So you're endorsing the Brian Kent plan as presented at the last meeting?
Yes.
And, okay, so is there a second? I will second that for-
Second, Bordelone.
Discussion, moved by Baumgardner, seconded by Granachowski. Councilor Baumgardner, your lead up to making your motion, was that speaking to it? Or did you wish to speak to it further now that the motion is on the floor?
Given the time now, no.
Councilor Melendez had his hand up.
I do not, I have to look up exactly which, what were the details of the Brian Kent plan. But I do agree that there should be at least one field on the property. If the town has identified that there is shortage of fields in the town, this seems like a perfect opportunity where we could remedy- in the town, this seems like a perfect opportunity where we could remedy um, that at least partially. Uh, just quickly on um, uh, some counselors comments that uh, um, setting a precedent on just listening to what the immediate residents say. Um, I, I, I do understand that point, um, but I, I will say that just for this specific um, plot of land, I feel like the potential revenue for this plot of land was so modest that um, even if we had developed it, it's not, it's not the same as another plot of land where you could make a huge development on it. So I, I do think there is that sort of key distinction. Um, but yeah.
Thank you. I haven't spoken yet on this. I'm going to take my turn now. Um. Actually, I did speak before, but I'm going again now. Um, now that Counselor Bumgardner has a motion on the floor. Um, I, I can go along with the bulk of what is in the Brian Kent Plan for that property, which included um, a small healing garden. It maintained the community garden aspect for um, people throughout the town to be able to lease a plot there, so that would still be available that way. I believe Counselor Bumgardner, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a small play area for children and then there was an increase in um, foresting of the land, which I am a strong proponent of foresting the land. Um, my ideally, what I would love to see is just the whole property forested. And it, it goes to what Counselor Bumgardner touched on as far as carbon sequestration. We lost twelve acres with the Merritt property. Um, and believe me, I was very, very um, strongly supportive of having that school built. We'll just leave it at that. But having done that, we did lose some, some forest. And we have, we have an opportunity to reforest six acres there. Um, I know that I may not be in the majority in that regard, that everybody, you know, may not want it forested totally. So therefore, I'm going to compromise on this and go along with some of the other ideas that um, some of the other counselors have put forth as far as maintaining some of these other properties. I would love to see um, you know, minimal maintenance from the town. Um, I don't want this to be, you know, a huge expense for us, so I don't want it to be anything very elaborate. Um, it should be simple. It should be something that, you know, as Counselor Parker had said, all people from all over town should be willing and comfortable to go there and enjoy the property because it, it could be a very lovely property. Um. As far as fields, I do not support regulation fields on that property. I recently wrote a letter to the Athletic Fields Task Force and my thinking is that Claude Chester is a much better place for fields. That's going to be closing in probably a year. Um, that's in the center of town. It's adjacent to the Aquanic Plains. It's near Sutton Park. It's near the fields at the community center. It's near the fields at the library senior center complex. That's the place where regulation fields should be going. Uh, we have parking there already. We've already paved um, parking areas. So um, I, I think that um, by my opposing regulation fields at Noank in no way means that I am opposed to sports fields. On the contrary, I believe the sports field should be better placed. Um. So if we agree, if there is again consensus on Counselor Bumgardner's motion, um, I would be willing to, I would be willing to endorse that. Um. At this point, I'll stop there. I, we'll come back to it eventually. All right. Counselor Heed and then Counselor Franco.
I, I, I guess I just want to be a little clear on the process and maybe make a suggestion. Are we going off of the four presentations that were made the last time as like up or down uh, on each one of those? Or is it a, um, would we consider doing something like um, uh, rank choice kind of voting where which ones could you support and see where we, we get a majority?
So Counselor Heed, do you have another motion that you would like to throw out? So Counselor Bumgardner gave us a good starting place in suggesting that we all consider the Brian Kent proposal. Um, if you have another idea that you would like to put out there, we can then go back and forth between those two. But please keep in mind, the consensus of the council is to make this some kind of green space.
Oh yeah, no, I don't want to make a motion. I want to throw it out there for thought if anybody else had uh, similar feeling because uh, if, if this motion fails, then what? That, that's my question, you know? Uh, do we want to consider something like rank choice voting? And I don't want to make a motion to that unless other people are, are interested, so.
Um, let's see, trying to see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I think everybody has talked. Counselor Franco, back to you.
So for fields to go on that property, um, the need of the community are for regulation sized fields. Claude Chester has been discussed also as a location and this has been talked about for years for fields, but um, the need, the amount of fields that are in need, I think are greater than anybody actually realizes. And every year it gets larger and larger. So from what I have heard from um, Jerry at Parks and Rec is that he would like to see Claude Chester um, made into more soccer fields and extend the park and that would be great. And I think that's a wonderful idea. But the, something that has the greatest need in our community is for a regulation sized baseball field. We do not have enough. And um, so that could go up there. And um, or they could put two soccer fields up there. They could put a full size regulation soccer field and they could put a general field for practice. Another thought was also, what are the school needs and what are the town needs? Because this is what the task force is trying to, to take up. And as somebody who was on the task force and understands some of the needs of this community and what really is needed and not maybe just what we'd like, um, they're still trying to get through all these numbers to figure out the actual needs, but I'm telling you, um, regulation sized fields are needed and that, and as I have stated before, the high school does not have their own softball field. So the girls go down and play in Washington Park and it is not an ideal situation for them to play there from what I'm understanding from um, teams. So they don't have their own field at the high school either. They don't have lacrosse. They don't have field hockey. Um, they play on the baseball field. The baseball field at the high school is getting chewed up from overuse because even lacrosse is playing in the outfield there or, or field hockey or lacrosse or one of the two play on the outfield because they don't have enough fields. So this is close enough to the high school. So I have, the task force has not discussed it with the high school as to what their needs are and if they would like these things or whether they want to do synthetic turf on the football field and utilize that. So there's a lot that still needs to be worked out. So I, I'm not willing to just go and vote for the Kent Cross, which by the way, we haven't even, we don't even have in front of us. We haven't gone into the details of it. We don't know what the cost is going to be to do this, where we're going to get the money from, or what exactly is going to be on there. So we saw the diagram and it was a rendering. And as we know, from looking at all the other um, properties that we've seen, renderings are just the idea place. That's where you start. So I'm not comfortable voting on an idea and making it an actual, something happening with it. Um, because it all depends on how you can fit the fields on the property of what you're going to end up getting. I, as well, if you put fields on the property, are you going to put one? Are you going to put two? So like you said, it's all in the details here. So um, we, we have a task force that's set up trying to figure out fields and they haven't finished doing that yet. So, and I think it's premature to go forward with this presentation on and vote on it when we don't even know anything about it really. And it was just a night, it, it's sort of an idea. Thank you. And, and one more thing. When you look at the Pleasant Valley and William Steely side of the town, they have no parks in that area. They have nothing. So when maybe the town staff said, yeah, we could utilize this land and really get some great money out of it, they're right. But that development in that whole area, they don't have a park. So they are lacking over there in open space. And I will say, Noank and nothing against Noank, and I know they're fighting for this park and they want it and they love it. They also have like Spicer Marina and they have one in their downtown area and they have things in that neighborhood, like right over in Tangle where they have a park. So they have parks in this side of town. And I'm, I'm just trying to say, I know the other side of town doesn't have any and we're developing their land. So I just want to put that out there. Um. So I am, I'm not prepared to go forward with anything further on that, on, on this presentation and voting on it when we don't have all the details in it. So thank you.
So at this point, I'm going to put another motion on the floor. I'm going to amend Counselor Bumgardner's motion to um, eliminate the healing garden and the, um, I think it was just a healing garden. Eliminate the healing garden and um, place, um, use the acreage for more trees. Um. So it would be keeping the community garden, including a play area for children, keeping the evergreens that are already there, including a small non-regulation rectangular field in the spot that was included in Mr. Kent's plan. And filling in the other spaces with native trees, native species. The funding for this would come from fundraising through the Groton Parks Foundation. And the property would remain in the hands of the town to be managed as any other park for the benefit of the whole town. I so move. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Move by Granitowski, seconded by Heed. Counselor Heed, did you wish to speak to that at all? I wanted to say one other thing. I'm sorry. Um. In comparing the parts of town, this, I presented a letter um, reaching out to a developer in another part of town, asking them to include a play area and access to trails on the property being developed. And surprisingly, we did not get the whole council to sign off on that letter. So um, it is somewhat ironic to hear from people now that they're asking for things from developers when they refuse to sign off on a letter asking for just those things. I'm done. Counselor Heed, did you wish to speak? And then Counselor Melendez. Counselor Melendez. With Counselors of Perry.
Am I on? Okay, I lowered my hand after uh, after Rachel spoke. So I, I will rest for a while.
Okay, so we have two things on the floor right now. Um, Counselor Franco, I see your hand, but you just had the floor, so let's give other people the chance if they wish to speak. Um, we have two motions on the floor right now. Keeping in mind, the consensus is to go green with this property. So we need to start having discussion about which way we would like to go with this. So we have the full fledged plan that Mr. Kent presented that was presented to us and we've had several weeks to review. And we have the modified plan, which is more leaning towards the Noank Woods proposal that eliminates certain things and has restrictions and quantifies who will maintain the property and where the funding will come from to take care of some of these processes. So is, Counselor Heed, did you have a suggestion for how to do the rank choice?
Am I being ignored and, and skipped over now?
No, you're not being ignored and skipped over. Counselor Heed, did you have an idea for how you wanted to do rank choice?
How to do rank choice?
I don't know how. Okay, we have other hands up. Um, we have Counselor Franco and we have Counselor Borlon. We have not heard from Counselor Parker or Counselor Obray in this round either. So Counselor Franco, we will go back to you next.
If we don't have regulation sized field, who's going to play on this field? Who plays on a non-regulation sized field? Anybody? Whoever's proposing this idea, who, who's going to use that field?
Uh, may I respond? You said anyone.
Go ahead.
I think, I think that children who uh, get together, uh, four or five kids at a time with a football or a soccer ball, four or five kids, six kids with a baseball and uh, they can have a pickup game. They can uh, uh, parents can go out and uh, teach a kid how to toss a ball and play catch with their kids. Those are people that can use a field of that sort. And it wouldn't be restricted to leagues that have a very formal policy. It would be open to everybody and uh, you wouldn't need umpires and referees and all the other expensive things. You just need people with a, a desire to play and to uh, have fun together. And uh, that would be the great thing about having a field that it's not marked out as a regulation sized baseball field.
So it doesn't actually, so it doesn't actually take care of the needs of the town then?
No, it does.
No, it doesn't. Cause it needs.
Oh, it does. It takes care of the needs of the people that need to do that.
I, I just asked a question. Now I have the floor again. But my point is for myself, I would vote for something that meets the needs of the town, which is lacking fields, sports fields for our town, for Parks and Rec and for the schools. We don't have enough fields and they need to build them. So we're going to end up having to buy property somewhere else eventually then to build these fields. So we have this property and we can build it there. So that's my, my intent and my purpose of going forward with this. And if somebody would like to make insinuations that I didn't sign a letter for open space on the other side of town, I don't recall seeing that email. So maybe somebody should have reached.
Order, that's not on point. Please, please confine your comments to the ten point.
Excuse me, I'm responding.
All right, enough. You're both out of order. Uh, Counselor Melendez, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the rank choice voting. I don't know, uh, I would be in favor of that. I think that I don't know how that would work within our rules, but basically everybody just ranks the plans from one to four, five, whatever it is. Um, and uh, if the majority, they win. If there's no majority, then, then um, the people who voted for the least popular uh, plans, they get, their second choice gets counted as sort of the voting. So um, that's how it would work. I would be in favor of doing that for this. And uh, yeah, that's what I'd say.
So I was just thinking, we only have two items, so do we really need to do rank choice voting? Because if you don't vote for one, then the other one becomes the item. Um, Counselor Bumgardner had sent something as well regarding this. I'm, I'm not sure what your thoughts are on that. Um, Counselor Borlon has her hand up. Counselor Borlon?
Yeah, my question is, it's like, what's the urgency and what is it costing us by, by rushing this process now? So finally, to establish that it's going to be not developed. So it's not really costing us anything. I feel like we need a more concrete plan, like what the other Kent uh, you know, plan would cost. Uh, you know, if, if we can design our own garden, I, I mean, I guess, should I submit a proposal of like what I want to see on there then? If we're not going to develop it, like what other, what other ideas can come forward? Doesn't have to be just these then, right? Not developing it and choosing not to develop it is one track, but we could have a bunch of different layouts and designs. Is that my understanding? So like, why do we have to stick to only these? So I, I don't feel that we have to make a decision tonight on this. I think, I think I would motion to table this item. And so we made a decision, you have the consensus that people do not want to del- develop, but now let's really dive into this, look at costs. Like I think, you know, we, we need more time to, to map out more detail.
Is there a second for Counselor Borlon's motion to table?
Um, Counselor, your microphone is off.
I can't hear. Counselor Franco, did you raise your hand to second her motion to table?
Motion.
All those in favor of tabling this item, please say aye. Or raise your hand, raise your hand, please. I see three hands, Counselor Obray, Franco, and Borlon. So the motion to table fails.
Parker still here?
Um. Counselor, did someone else have their hand up? Counselor Heed or Bumgardner? Trying to look at my list. No, okay.
So, I wasn't finished, so I can design the garden then too. I can come up with another plan. I can come up with another plan.
Finished when you made your motion. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I can make, so I can present an idea of what I think undeveloped use of space could be then?
That's what we did at our last meeting.
Right. We had ideas, but then you just presented an idea where you chopped out other things and added and put what you want on there. So, I'm wondering, do we have the option to present our own plan?
So, I will make a motion to withdraw my amendment. Counselor Heed, would you withdraw your second? I will put another motion on the floor to endorse the no ank woods idea as presented by Mr. Johnson in great detail. Is there a second?
A second.
Move by Granatowski, seconded by Heed. So, we have two plans on the floor. Both were presented several weeks ago, and we've had opportunity to look at them. Counselor Melendez, you have-
Um, yeah, I I don't think we should stick strictly only to the plans that were presented, just because there does seem to be some interest in having a regulation-sized field, and none of those plans actually had one of those in there. So, I, I do think we should maybe have some leeway to stray from the strict plans.
And Counselor Obray, are you raising your hand, Counselor Obray?
Yes. Oh goodness, you know what happens when I have to wait? I know that everybody is tired of talking about the land and no ank, and, and I applaud you for trying to get an answer tonight. But it says on here, you know, school property disposition, discussion. It doesn't say motion. It doesn't say make a decision. It says have discussion. And, and I understand what you're trying to do, because you're probably very tired of having this come up and have long conversations every time it comes up. But it shows that we are know-where's together on a decision on this. We've driven Eileen to drink. But I, I think, I think we, I think we should say enough. We're not going to come to a decision tonight. I think we should see if we can't draft a one, two, three, four of the different things that have been presented to us. And then with that, whittle it down to an answer. But right now, we're talking about, well, this was said. Well, and we probably should have it in front of us, but we don't. So, I, I think this one is best put to bed for tonight, and I would make a motion that we, we hold off. We've done our discussion, and we hold off to a future meeting for a-
Counselor Obray, we just got that motion table and it failed, and we have two motions on the floor. So, the motion to table just failed. So, we have-
Did anybody vote?
Yes, we, we voted.
What'd you say?
Yes, there was consented. I'm sorry.
When did we vote?
We had, let's see, motion to table, and then there were three. You raised your hand.
I'm saying, I'm saying it again.
Um, I won't entertain that motion, because we already had the motion to table, Counselor Obray. Um, Counselor Baumgartner and then Heed.
Well, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Move to adjourn, even though we have two motions on the floor by Obray. Second, it's not debatable, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand and keep your hand up until I call your name. Counselors Obray, Franco, and Bordelain.
Oh, come on.
Opposed?
Nay.
Baumgartner, Heed, Zepary, Melendez, Granatowski. We are at eight counselors. The motion fails to adjourn. We have counselors who wish to speak. Counselor Baumgartner and then Heed.
Tough act. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, there's been a lot of talk about regulation fields, and I, Brian Kent's proposal for the youth field is regulation. You can have a game there. It just, it wouldn't be large enough to have, you know, adult-sized games there. So, it would be tailor-made for young schoolchildren. You know, school, school-aged children. So, that in those sports, that could be, you know, you could have soccer there or lacrosse. And I can recall, just from the conversations that we've had in the past with Parks and Rec, they have indicated that there is a need for, you know, youth fields as well. It's not just, you know, adult-sized fields. Thank you.
Uh, we are on to Counselor Heed.
Uh, yeah. So, I guess, what I, what I would like to point out is that if we, if we were to keep it, I mean, we are keeping it, but if we go through the different ideas that we had last time around, there were parts of every single idea that I liked that was put forward. So, I liked Ken Frost's plan, because it was a real plan. It was a visual. It came across as, you know, this is where we want to go with the property. What was lacking was how to finance it. Whereas the plan put forward by, I forget. It's getting late. I forgot, I forgot the gentleman's name. But he was put forward by, by one of the, the local residents and actually endorsed by the ground conservation advocates, had a funding plan that went along with it. Whereas if you were to do sports fields, clearly, it would cost money. You'd have to do parking. You'd have all kinds of issues, I think, that come along with that, that, that may not be an appropriate use for, for that neighborhood. So, like, I liked Ken Frost's plan. I liked the, the second plan that came about primarily because there were, there was funding and a lot of trees. And I don't think if you make it two, two grand of a plan, it's going to cost money. And clearly, what we're trying to do is something that benefits the town, but doesn't really create, you know, another expense. So, that's why, you know, I could support both of those plans in general, but a merger of the two might be the best way to go.
Counselor Bordelain, are you raising your hand?
Yes, I, once again, just stating that I feel there could be other plans. We established that we are keeping the property as it looks and that we're going to not develop it into anything like as far as property. So, therefore, let's take a break and come forth with good ideas that could move us in that direction based on what we saw, get some more numbers and see. I think making a decision tonight is not really going to change much. There's no really pressure. The property's not costing us any money as it sits right now. I, I don't see the urgency. I think that we could have a much more deliberate discussion if we, give us some more time now that we have the consensus that that's the direction we're going, and now let's come up with some other ideas that kind of take the Frost idea or a bunch of other, and maybe some other presentations of ideas now that we have the direction in, in the area we want to go. I think there could be some more ideas that we have not tapped into yet. And also, I think when Leanne asked to table the idea, I do think that she should have the right to, even though it happened once, more discussion happened. I think that she should have the right under, under the rules to take that up for another vote if she sho, if she so wished. I think her being overlooked, I think is unfair. Thank you.
I see Counselor Heed, Counselor Franco, and then Counselor Heed. Is your hand up again, or? Counselor Franco and then Heed.
So, Counselor Baumgartner had brought this forward with them. He had requested that presentation be brought into last meeting. So, Counselor Baumgartner, what, what will be the cost on this, that project?
I don't know.
So, we're going to vote on something. We have no idea what the cost is as it, as it's designed. So, that's my, my, we don't even have the information. We're going on a memory of what this proposal was. We're talking about a field that's just drawn on there, and I'm not, I, I mean, it was a good presentation, but it was just a field that was drawn on there. Nobody's done the right measurements to see if all this stuff is actually going to fit, right? It's a rendering. It's an idea of what could go there. It's not an actual schematic of what will fit there. It's what could go there. And, um, so, if we're going to start doing this, we're going to have to go by each item individually then. Do you want this? Do you want the, the peace and healing garden? Do you want trees? Do you want which size, what kind of field? Are we going to do a rectangle field? Are you going to do a softball field? Are you going to do a baseball field? Are you, I mean, like, what are we going to do? So, we're going to sit here all night and just keep debating until somebody calls the question here and makes us, and, and calls the vote, basically. Or everybody just stops talking. I could talk all night.
We have Counselor Heed and then Zepary.
First, if I could back up to, Counselor Obray made the point, and I forgot to mention this, I apologize. But this is a discussion. This is not necessarily final dispensation. This is not necessarily. So, that, that's all very true, but with that being said, it's a discussion of what we want to see. So, instead of complaining about this or that, I think people should say what they want to see. And let's start, let's just back up for a second and start right there. I, I would like to see it be, you know, like I said, I could take one, any one of those other, one of the four presentations that came across, but I think, you know, some open space, a lot of trees, something that doesn't cost the taxpayer a lot of money, I, I think is the right way to go. And I liked, well, I particularly liked the Ken Frost's idea, but I, I had an issue with, like, how, how do you fund it? So, I think when, when it comes down to it, that could be like a guideline with some adjustment. And we would need to go forward to figure out how to fund something like that. Also, you know, I'm, well, I guess that, that's the main thing. And the other thing is, I don't have Robert's rules in front of me, but I do believe that the motion to to table the motion that was made right after the first motion table the motion could be ruled a frivolous motion, unintentional. But I just want to point that out, that, that, that's the mayor's role and that I support her standing up.
On the context of the discussion.
Okay, we have, whoops, we have Counselors Zepary and then Melendez.
I'd just like to point out that we're, we're generally developing a concept of what we would like to have. Voting for funding at this time. This project can be funded and should be funded over a period of years. We can take the property, and if we wanted to put in a, a, a group of fruit trees as one part of it, one year, we can put in some fruit trees. If we wanted to put in a playground is another part of it, another year, we can put in a playground. And we don't have to do anything in any given year. The property is usable for the purposes that we discussed earlier, just as it is. It's probably not suitable for a, a regulation baseball diamond and for league play because of the, it's, it's in a densely populated area. All around it are houses and, and it, it doesn't have parking for a lot of people at one time. But all of that being said, my primary point here is, we don't have to fund it this year. It's just to get an idea in a direction for the development of this, this property and for the use of the people of the whole town.
Counselor Melendez.
Uh, yes, I agree with Counselor Heed. The only way we're going to get every, anywhere is if everyone states what they would like to see or what they would be open. And then we can sort of, everybody can have an understanding of where the consensus kind of is. So, I'll just start by saying, I, I would be open for any open space use, reforested, arboretum, garden. I'm, I'm for all of that. I just believe that Parks and Rec has sort of identified a shortage, a shortage of fields in the town, and this is a great opportunity to make at least one if you think baseball fields would be too. Then a soccer field. But I, I in order for this land to be best used for Old Town, I do think a field is part of that equation. So, and I think everybody should go around and say what, what they want to see in it, rather than what they, what they don't. I think we'll get further faster.
Thank you, Counselor Melendez. I am perfectly acceptable to do that. Would we like to start around the table? We can start as we would sit in our normal council chambers. Counselor Baumgartner?
Definitely. I'm going to say, well, we should build a Ferris wheel, because we keep going round and round. But, uh, you know, I, I, I support Brian Kent's vision. I think it's important to note that I believe the town should manage the site. There is an interesting model in New London for the Riverside, Riverside Park. Riverside Park Conservancy works in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Department to invest in that property. So, you know, you could have a situation where funds could be expended by that nonprofit in support of that, the mission of the park. And in many ways, what the mayor suggested using the Parks Foundation, that needs, say, you know, the, the Parks Foundation were to create an endowment. You could, you know, utilize that endowment to pay for, you know, upgrades to, to that park or, you know, healings, for example. So, I think that's an important model, but, and also, most importantly, ensuring that there is a conservation easement on that property, so that it is a binding agreement.
Thank you, Counselor Baumgartner. Counselor Parker, it looks like she's left the meeting, so we are at Counselor Franco.
I would like to see full-sized field, regulation-sized fields, and maybe a smaller field that would fit the needs of our community that we are lacking. And I would like to see the town manage the site or even give it to the, I mean, if, if it's going to be something like for the high school to use or a school, then maybe the, they take the property as their own, and they make them their own fields. If it's, if the schools are using them for their own purposes. I would not like to see a conservation easement on there in perpetuity. I would like to, but that's it. And then whatever else fits on the property, if you can fit, and you want a walking trail around the whole thing as people have basked for, or you want to put some trees if they'll fit, or you want a playground if it fits. I mean, because I, I also know that we had voted quite some time ago and said, there will always be a garden and some open space over there. So, if we put two fields, there's, we set, we voted on this, a portion of that area has to be for open space and for a garden. So, um, that's where I stand. I want two fields and you guys to have whatever else that fits on the property.
Counselor Heed.
I, I, I like to have an organized plan that you can aim for. So, I do like Ken Frost's plan for that reason, as I mentioned before. But I also really like the ideas put forward by, by the other plan where you have basically the ground conservation advocates in charge of designing what trees to put on, where, where to, how to manage the property. And I would like a non-regulation field, something that doesn't require a whole lot of maintenance. You know, I'm, I'm looking to do something that doesn't cost a whole lot of money, but, you know, benefits both bicarbon sequestration, creating some open space, creating a field the kids can play in. You know, I, I really like the stories and some of the letters that I hear from parents who are taking their kids there for sledding in the winter. I think that's, that's great. It's like Washington Park, you know, there, there are hundreds of kids there. Everyone are sledding, and it's a beautiful sight. But I think a combination of those two is the direction I'd like to go. And if, if it ends up being the fire district managing it, that's okay. But again, we should be able to set it up in such- But again, we should be able to set it up in such a way that we're not putting extra expenses on the taxpayer.
Counselor Aubrey.
I'll just go along with whatever the consensus comes up with. Everybody's got an idea.
Counselor Bordelain. Counselor Bordelain, did you wish to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I basically have stated, like, I think there should be a field there if it's not a, you know, baseball diamond, but obviously something that's regulation. Field hockey is also needing a field. And that could be low impact. Walking paths, you know, it can be garden. But once again, it's really hard tonight to vote on something without really kind of setting forth the time and the plan to really collaborate on this appropriately. I think that we established that we want it to be open space, but it needs more time and to make a full decision. The Robert Frost presentation, it was really great. We don't know how we're funding it, where are things going? So I think the next step to me would be to move forward and kind of piece together all these ideas and figure out what that would look like and come together again over that. Thank you.
Counselor, Melendez already spoke. This was his idea. Thank you, Counselor Melendez. So we're at Counselors Zepary.
I agree with Counselor Baumgartner, Counselor Heed, and Counselor Granatowski. I think this should be an open field area. I think it should be well shaded. I think it should be a place where grandparents can walk their grandchildren without worrying about toddlers running into the street. I think it should be a place where mothers can come with a basket lunch and a blanket and throw the blanket out in a shady spot and have a little picnic with their children for lunch. I think it should be a place where children can use their imagination to develop games on an open field. Those are things that I envisioned for this kind of a park, and I don't think it has to cost a whole lot of money. So that's how I feel about this property.
Okay, so then, as usual, I go last on this. I, my first choice would be the no ank woods idea is put forth by Mr. Johnson. The goal with that is it is doing something that benefits the whole town and that it is providing carbon sequestration. It provides a space for the whole community to gather in. It is low cost because the money would be raised through fundraising channel through the Groton Parks Foundation. If that would not be the choice of the consensus of the rest of the council, I could support the Kent Frost vision for the property. Okay, so we are at what time it is? It is 11:08. We can do, now that everyone's spoken, everyone has had their piece on this, I think. Would anyone like to call the question or would you like to come back?
I move the question.
Moving it now?
Is there a second? Okay, so I need paper to write. Give me a second. Counselors Zepary has called the question, seconded by, that was Heed. All those in favor of moving the question, we would be voting on the second, the second motion than the first motion. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your hand. So that is Zepary, Heed, Melendez, Granatowski. All those opposed? Please raise your hand till I call your name. Aubrey, Bordelain, Baumgartner, and Franco. It is tied because we're at eight council, so that motion fails. So I will, I will give the floor to the other person who made the original motion. Counselor Baumgartner, would you like to speak at this moment?
I'm muted.
You're not muted. You're unmuted. I mean, you're muted.
No, 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 but I know there's others who'd like to speak.
Okay, so you don't wish to speak at this time? So we have Counselor Franco and Bordelain at this point?
So I just don't know how we're getting to anywhere. I mean, other than just saying the Kent Frost presentation, when everybody just went around the table and we all said what we wanted and there's really no full consensus on what we're looking at. So I might as well just throw it out there. I'll make a motion for a regulation-sized baseball field and another general field to be on the property along with some other items out of the Frost presentation.
Could you specify which other items out of the Frost presentation, please?
To be determined later.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Bordelain? So I'm going to restate, you're making a motion to fit a regulation baseball field and another regulation field on the property with other components of the Kent Frost plan to be determined later?
No.
Could you repeat it then, please?
A regulation-sized field, not specifying which one or what kind. General field along with other items from the Kent Frost presentation to be determined at a later date.
So your motion is for a regulation-sized field, not specifying what type of field, and other items from the Kent Frost plan, not specifying what those items are either? Is that correct?
Determined at a later date.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelain, are you seconding that?
Yep, second. I think everything should be seconded for fair discussion.
Thank you. So we have three motions on the floor right now. So now I think it becomes a point where a simple up or down vote isn't as simple. So now maybe we do have to do the ranked choice voting. So are you amenable to coming back and doing that at our next committee of the whole meeting? I'm going to, I'm going to go to the counselors who have motions on the floor first because they are the ones that are at stake here. So we have Counselor Baumgartner, myself, and Counselor Franco all have made motions. So I'd like to know, I'd like to hear from you two, and then I'll speak to it. And then I see other hands are up as well. So would Counselor Baumgartner or Franco like to address the idea of doing a ranked choice vote on this?
An explanation of exactly how a ranked choice would vote on this.
You take all the options and you say, this would be my first choice. This would be my second choice. This would be my third choice. And you put them all in order. You have to assign each choice a value, whether it be first, second, or third, in this case, because we have three items. And in that way, then, we figure out what people want to do. Counselor Baumgartner, I think is familiar with this. Counselor Heed is clearly familiar with this, as it was his suggestion. Counselors Zepary has his hand up. Counselors Zepary?
I think that a motion to designate that property for a regulation ball field is premature at this time. We have a task force, the athletic field task force, that is still deliberating over what we need. And until we get recommendations from them, I think we should hold off. In addition, building a regulation ball field at the task force, the last task force, I think it was Kurt Frost said it costs about a million dollars to build one regulation ball field. So I think that we, you know, this is not a good time to plan on spending a million dollars for a ball field. I think that this is a time that we want to take a direction that would preserve the space. And I think the general, I think most people in the area would like to see a open space park.
So, so then, are we looking to pursue a vote on this tonight then, Counselors Zepary?
Well, I think that we should, personally, I don't think that that area is well-suited to regulation ball field because of the community it's in. It's, not only will we have the expense of building the ball field, we'll have the expense of building a parking lot for it. But the people that live in the houses surrounding that area are going to have to put up with the, with the noise and with the humbug that comes with having a league play in their immediate surrounding. Just across the street, there's a row of houses. I think that it's an imposition on them and I, and I don't think it's an appropriate use of that property.
Okay. I was looking for information from the people who have the motions on the floor, but no one is asking. So we have Bordelain and Franco.
So I had spoken to Counselor Chris Conley regarding state funding for building fields because other towns have had fields built with state funding. And she cannot give me any answers this year because there's just too much up in the air right now. But I have witnessed, and I have shared this with town manager and other people that, like I believe it was New Haven, has built fields down there with sports fields with funding from the state. Also, there are numerous fields in our communities that are surrounded by neighborhoods. So I don't think that should be an issue. I think this is property that the town owns. The task force has said there is a shortage of fields and this would fit a need for the shortage of town. Because otherwise, if we, my thought is if we make this into a park, just a sitting leisurely park, and then we're going to end up having to buy property somewhere else to go put all these fields. So my thought is why not utilize the property we have and put the field on? And we can also use it for the community to have walking trails and other things in that community, I understand. I think one of the biggest needs in our community is our sports fields. And so if we don't want to put it here, we'll spend money, a lot more money later on when we have to acquire land to purchase the land to put the sports field on. So that's why I'm not specifying which fields should go there because I think the task force may be able to choose what is best and the most needed for our community and what will fit in there. So that's where I stand. And I don't know about ranked voting and I don't know how we're going to go forward with this. And to be honest with you, I mean, if we say this is what we're going to do, I mean, it's going to take time. So at 20 after 11, we could still be sitting here for another hour from now just still talking about knowing gardens. So I know other people have asked to bring this back up at a later date, but some people do not want to. And I think they should state why they don't want to and what the urgency is right now that we have to decide this tonight.
So I was trying to take notes and when everybody, when we did the around the table thing, and I see one, two, three counselors specified regulation fields, others specified not regulation fields, but pickup game fields. So it looks like there's a minority of the council who wants regulation-sized fields from what I saw in my notes.
I didn't hear that.
But I, so I can read it through if you'd like, but I was taking notes as we were going. So I realize it is late and I know the manager is in a, is in a room where he has to vacate because police need the room for roll call. So are we of, of a mind to come back at our next cow and be ready to vote on these three items? Is there a consensus to do that? Come back to the very next cow and vote on these three choices that we have before us? If you are agreed with that, please raise your hand and I will call names as to who has their hand up. So I see Granatowski, Zepary, and Heed are the only three willing to come, and Melendez. There are four of us that'll come back at the next cow and vote on these three choices? So that fails. So then...
I had my hand up. I didn't get to speak, but I also had another thought. But anyway, before you, I was still waiting.
So let me, let's make it clear, okay? Please raise your hand if you want to do this at the next cow and vote on the three choices we have. Please raise your hand and I'll call names. So I see Zepary, Heed, Melendez, and Granatowski. So there are four of us who want to bring this up at the next cow. There are four who do not. So we are stalemated again.
And before you went to this vote, I was trying, I had my hand up and then you jumped to that. So.
Okay, and it wasn't actually votes, consensus. We have, I see Melendez, Baumgartner, and Counselor Bordelain. You said you wish to speak. Go ahead.
My question is, I feel like these shouldn't be the only options. I think that we have time to do, deliver, you know, really map this out so that we do our due diligence and find the best non-developed option that, that we have a consensus for and come up with a very, you know, a much more coherent plan and start looking at numbers, what types of trees are people talking about? I think like, we're at that point and there's really no, no rush at this time. I don't, I really don't see the urgency. So we say it's not going to be developed. We've established that. So let's take that for the night as a win and come back with a plan and everybody can maybe start to map out their own idea of what this garden or map should look like and what trees and all they want and bring your, bring your idea forward or, and we'll take some community direction. But I think it makes sense to reopen it back up to the community to come with their suggestions since now we have a direction as what way we're going. But I definitely think that there should be some type of somewhat regulation field in the town. If it's a town property, we need to make sure that we're identifying a need and trying to meet the need of the town in some, some way. But I don't think the options that were presented tonight are the only options for undeveloped use.
We have Counselor Melendez, Baumgartner, and Aubrey.
Yeah, I just want to say maybe perhaps since it's four-four and it's deadlocked, to bring someone else over, perhaps instead of limiting it to just these three, you could say if you have an idea in the next week before the cow, put it up there too. And then it's not just these three. I think everybody, I personally believe that everybody here has an option that they agree with. But if there's another option that you think of between, before the next cow, you can certainly bring that up and just add it to the list.
Baumgartner and then Aubrey.
Amen. A couple of things. I know we voted on a, reading the question, and I believe, due to Robert's rules, we can't ever move a question because, because in Robert's rules, you can't move the question in committee of the whole. So just, just in case folks want to do that, make a motion to do that. It's not permissible. And I do think we, I know it's getting late, but it should be uncomfortable to talk about this because we are really all over the map. And I think we're doing a great disservice to the people we represent by just constantly talking about this. And we should find some resolution. We've had a lot of time to formulate ideas and, you know, come up with actual blueprints. Counselor Bordelain, you, Counselor Bordelain, you talked about, you know, having, identifying time to, you know, to put a plan together for trees. And I agree with you, but I, you know, we've had the time to do that. And so I think we, in general, we can support a vision. It doesn't have to be a blueprint, but, and to clarify, I, when I said, you know, I don't support, you know, I support having a youth field, that doesn't mean I don't support having a field that can accommodate actual sports games with fans and community members. I think that's, you know, we want to talk about creating a park that is inclusive of all people. It shouldn't just be about pickup games for the local kids who live in the neighborhood. The goal of that park should be about creating a space that all people in town can enjoy. And quite frankly, potentially even a space that Parks and Rec could monetize, right? You know, there is... Um, you know, there is a demand for kind of all kinds of fields, whether it's youth or, or regulation. And, and so you could have, you know, lacrosse travel team or lacrosse soccer team play there. Um, and, and the town could charge for that, and those funds could be used to actually support that park. So, you know, I, I think we do have to look at all the options. You can do that in an environmental-friendly way. Um, and you can use those proceeds to help pay for, for those seedlings. So, you know, um, but we should, my, my point is, we should be having these conversations. I know it's getting late, but I, I think we are all closer to kind of each other on this issue than, and we're all letting on.
Counselor Obree.
Uh, Counselor Mendez, I'm sorry, I just said your name wrong. I'm sorry. I, I just agree with what he said. I, I think that we are, we need to look at what we have present, been, had presented to us. Come back, try to come to a conclusion, because I just don't believe it's going to happen tonight. I understand. Uh, you know, some wanting to finish it, but I don't think we can this way. Uh, we just, we are, we are divided, not on where we want to go, but how we want to go. And uh, I think we need to go back and read the minutes from that meeting where the people came in and did some very good presentations. And from there, try to, try to make a selection. You know, maybe we could uh line them up so that we end up basically saying, okay, this one's a one, this one's a three, this one's a five, and come to a conclusion that way, because it's not going to happen tonight. Thank you. And I love your palm tree, Joe.
Um. Yes, and that's, we were stalemated when, when I offered that suggestion, that we come back to this at the next cow. Um, and we were, we were four to four, uh, where people, you know, four wanted to continue on and four wanted to come back. So we were at a stalemate um, as far as what to do. Um, unless you'd like me to ask again, would you like me to ask again if you'd like to come back and look at this at the next cow? Is there consensus? Please raise your hand if there, if you'd like to come back and revisit this at the next cow.
I have a question now.
I see Counselor Obree, Granatowski, Heed, Zepari, and Melendez. We have consensus. Very good. So what we will be doing is, this item will be continued on to our next cow, whenever that is. I'm not sure when that will be um continued to.
I hope this doesn't bump out the COVID stuff.
Oh. Um, and let's see, I think that's all we need on that. Okay, so we had consensus to do that. And it is 11:28, and at this point, in order to take up anything new, we need um a vote from the council. We need consensus from the council to take up anything new. Is there consensus to take up anything new at this time? Raise your hand, please. Counselor Bordelon, Baumgartner, Melendez would like to take up the new items. Um, that's not a majority of the council, so we will not be taking up the rest of the items on the agenda for tonight. And just for the public, these are three referrals from Counselors Apari. Um, and they will too um be moved forward onto another cow agenda. So at that point, then, um, we're not considering anything new. So I believe rules people. I believe the way this works is if we have said we're not going to consider anything new, I now entertain a motion to adjourn rules people. Is that correct?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Zepari, seconded by Obree. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Baumgartner and Bordelon and Franco? Any abstentions? We are adjourned at 11:29. Thank you. You've all been troopers this evening.
Good night, all.
We will come back to this.
Good night, everybody.
Time and energy, everybody.
Thank you, Patrice.